I just.
Entry leave, those thieves.
That we knew that. Had no idea.
Okay, well, welcome to the planning commission meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I so moved.
I second.
Oh, thank you. I didn't hear you. Yes, I approve.
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Knott?
Yes.
Chair Johnson?
Yes. Are there any amendments to the minutes from the February?
That's a long time ago.
I didn't see any corrections in there. So do I have a motion to approve minutes?
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
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 Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Knott?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Chair Johnson?
Yes. This is a quasi judicial hearing regarding the public hearing and consideration of CU twenty dash oh two request by Bruce Francis for conditional use permit to allow shoreline stabilization. Bruce Francis' application under J. Robert Dodd Jr. and the Breakers Point Homeowners Association for conditional use permit to allow the shoreline stabilization near the Estuary and North Large Street Breakers Point condominium. The affected property is described as tax lot nine thousand of map five one oh one nine D A. The property is located in residential high density, open space, escrow, oceanfront management overlay and flood hazard overlay zones and is owned by the city of Cannon Beach. The conditional use request will be reviewed against usable section seventeen dot eighty dot one oh, one one oh, conditional uses. Overall use standard section seventeen dot four two dot oh six oh A one standards shoreline stabilization and seventeen dot eighty dot two three oh shoreline stabilization. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the planning commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any member believe he or she has a conflict of interest or personal bias? Does any member had an ex parte contact or made a site?
Site visit.
Site visit.
Site visit.
Site visit.
Okay, sir, staff report?
Yes. I'll, I'll pretty much just read my staff report because of the environment and and I will also have to kind of pause banning the zooms if I need to keep who's in the queue and that. So maybe a little different, but bear with us. So this, there have been a number of conditional use applications associated with Breakers Point over the years. With the most similar to the current application likely, the most recent, the twenty sixteen Breakers Point application, which installed a shoreline protective structure as part of an active restoration project in the nearby pre-estuary. Twenty fifteen conditional use application utilized a vegetated juke or reco system to stabilize the north shoreline of the Cola Creek at and immediately downstream of the end of Large Street. Where on point erosion had exposed buried utility lines. The city found that there was a demand for better included shoreline stabilization structure DP fifteen oh five in the act of restoration CU sixteen oh one, which eventually gave way to seasonal storm surges and washed away at this early success. In addition to the previous creek bank stabilization project and in order to further protect and provide additional foundation stabilization for the footings of the buildings and decks, Breakers Point HOA is applying to install a thirty foot long sheet pile barrier that is approximately fifteen feet from the foundation of building forty five and approximately twenty five feet from the top of the slope of the bank. The sheet pile barrier is twenty feet tall and the top of the barrier will be about two feet below the Breakers Point lawn. As such, the sheet pile barrier designed stabilized the building foundation line obstructive support directly below the lawn front of building forty five and will not disturb the creek bank. The HOA first approached the city with an application for building permit for the shoreline stabilization project under the Cannon Beach Minutes Co. I touch on in the analysis and information section definition of shoreline and shoreline stabilization and that to reference the jurisdictional letters that have been received and incorporated into the package. In addition, the city analysis of this application is performed by the city's recent effort to update the Florida Management Plan, which resulted in Oregon Department of Geology and Mineral Industries' preparation of special paper forty nine beach and shoreline dynamics in Cannon Beach Litoral Cell negotiations for doing management by Don C. Allen. That's all. The Allen Report. The Allen Report shows the dynamic nature of both the beachfront and estuary system and is also included as far as the record. Like I have mentioned in the jurisdictional letter, the shoreline stabilization kind of the constituency or where that might fall, where the structure might fall in relation to anyone's jurisdiction. I've also copied into the record there in the staff report to flood zone, where the vegetative floodline hits and all of the various zoning districts and overlays that are applicable. When we get to the conditional use criteria seventeen eighty one ten A, a demand exists for the use of the proposed location. And so we will let the applicant explain what they brought forward, but I wanted, I will touch on my staff comment. This criterion includes an analysis of the demand for the use of a particular, a particular location and includes several factors that should be analyzed. However, the identified factors do not particularly pertain to the proposed use, such as the accessibility for users, such as customers and employees, availability of similar existing uses and availability of other appropriately zoned sites. The application makes the case that this use is locationally dependent and the unspoken assumption is that these factors play little to no role in the analysis of demand. The question for the city in this case is whether indeed a demand exists for the protective structure at this location. The placement of the barrier will be well beyond the top of bank of the dynamic Cola Creek and ORS vegetative line. The barrier is proposed to stabilize the foundation of building forty five from what can only be surmised as the future movement of soils caused by the hydrogeomorphological dynamics of this theme and higher erosion. The barrier proposed in the geological port is for a twenty foot steel pile, sheet pile barrier to protect footing of the existing structure, which replaces the earlier cemental for a twenty foot deep steel sheet pile barrier to protect their gas line from wind, wave wind beach erosion. Presumption is that this structure would offer added protection from any future movements of the creek if sand grading, vegetative measures and burritos are not up to the task of protecting the structures. As the applicant states, note that this, since Breaker Point HOA is no longer required by the gas company to include the gas line with the building stabilization, this enables Breakers Point HOA to position the support structure in its most effective location closer to the creek. This also allows a repositioning of this support structure further away from the Cola Creek bank, twenty five feet from top of bank versus five feet from top of bank, as seen in the previous draft reports, eliminating the risk of being exposed through erosion on the creek side of the barrier. In the event that the creek bank erodes to within twenty five feet of the building footing, Breakers HOA applies the sand fill mitigation process and standards in accordance with the emergency authorization permit provision of Oregon's Removal Fill Law. And that's ORS one nine six seven ninety five through nine ninety. Compared to the previous sand burritos, the new location is further back, closer to building forty five and not as exposed to the top of bank of the Cola Estuary. Since there has been no evidence presented that one, would one believe this is a foundational support structure rather than a shoreline stabilization structure, which would act as a protective barrier to protect building forty five from any future encroachment from the Cola Creek, staff has treated this application under the conditional use provision of the chapter. In other words, there's no statement to reports from architects, engineers, or architectural engineers that provide evidence that this structure is somehow supportive of the building's foundation to weaken or compromise soils or conditions. The applicant is not necessarily obligated to provide such, but if it is, being argued that this isn't a shoreline or a future shoreline protection, it might make for a better case. Just as a retaining wall protects the structures or areas from the movement of suspect soils with the threat of the geomorphological dynamics of landslide due to steep slopes, this barrier is built to protect from wave wind beach erosion. As geotechnical tech, tech for five feet of ocean erosion. As the applicant states, the Cola Creek Estuary, the dynamic system is constantly moving to the many systems at play in the high level of the creek shore and pipeline. Though, recent Allen Report's figure eleven down below shows the dynamic nature of this area and offers a baseline for the applicant's argument that a demand exists for this structure to provide some added protection for the buildings located near North Large if wind, Cola decides to swing further north. It should be noted that the applicant states that there is no longer a need to protect the existing gas line. The buildings are in jeopardy. The applicant's geo study assumptions are based on the design of the required sheet pile bending string. Assume six foot of soil erosion on the beach side of the barrier and that five percent of hydrostatic water pressure occurs on the retained side of the barrier as the soil erosion occurs. The geo report, tech report also says that the existing ground surface on both sides of the barrier will be at the same elevation with no retained height difference. So there will be little evidence to no available evidence of the project after completion. As that states in the exhibit, the sheet pile barrier is twenty foot tall. Top of the barrier will be about four feet below the Breakers Point lawn. The other components of the conditional use for shoreline stabilization that I think pertinent to this project is in, on page eleven of the staff report, G structural shoreline stabilization methods along the Cola shall be permitted only if the criteria met and a substantial public benefit is demonstrated increase or alteration does not unreasonably interfere with public trust and right. And in the staff comments, I state, the applicant has placed the structure far up in the top of one site while protecting any future movement, whether substantial public benefit has been afforded is up to the planning commission to consider, but there appears to be no substantial harm or risk posed by granting the CUP in the foreseeable future. And the application meets the remaining standard criteria seventeen eighty if. Earlier DP fifteen oh five and CU sixteen oh one findings clear the founder with a need as when the final decision noted the undercut bank at the project site, the earlier project site made access to the Cola Creek shoreline, we have Large Street was not safe. And yet also found at the time, potential damage to the infrastructure as well as the project site did not be addressed from an upwind location. Based on this plan, the commission finds no solution to the erosion problem involving an upwind location exists. And so that was in the earlier staff report. Public benefit, the planning commission must weigh the public benefit of ensuring any future undermined of these structures with thereafter completions would not be evident in one provides the public benefit and secures the public trust without negative implications. Any questions?
So, so what is going to happen with this gas line?
Do you hear that?
Joe, what is, you asked, what is going to happen with the gas line?
Right.
We'll, we'll let the applicant respond to that. Joe, have any other questions on?
Okay. There was additional correspondence. I don't know if you've all picked that up, but there were several letters that I picked up in news.
We have other packets if anybody needs a packet here.
So it's just the one email that was sent today.
And we also have a request from three members of the public to speak. So as part of the process.
Yeah. Okay. So are you, are you staying on board or are you going to excuse yourself?
I, I don't know. Your thoughts on that, Joe?
The three issues are bias, conflict of interest, and ex parte contacts. Said no ex parte contacts. In terms of bias, can you make a decision based on the facts and not based on preexisting or things that you learned outside of this process?
I can certainly be unbiased about it all.
So then the second question is whether or not there's a conflict of interest. And that is whether or not the approval or denial of this permit would have a financial implication for you to your benefit or to your detriment. And, you know, that's, that's a question, you know, you have to answer and I just don't know enough about your situation.
At this point, I'm not close to building forty five, so I don't feel that it has financial.
And just to, to make it clear, you, do you live at Breakers Point? Is that a conflict or?
Yes.
Okay. Just one or another. So, but your location is far away from building forty five. Okay. So as long as you, you can make the determination in an unbiased way based on the evidence in the record before this and there is no conflict of interest, you are not required to refuse yourself. Are there any questions in that the public or anyone has to point out further?
Can I ask you a question? What, what building do you live in? I mean, they're numbered. Sorry. Sixty four, sixty. Okay. Thank you.
Where is that in relationship to four times the one issue here?
It's on the other side of the traffic circle, bottom. The other side, the, okay. The western side.
Okay. The pertinent criteria to be considered are noted in the staff report listed on the criteria sheet next to the west door. Testimony, arguments and evidence must be directed towards that criteria or other criteria voiding the municipal code which the person testifying, testifying believes to apply to decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision makers and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue recludes the appeal based on that issue. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional testimony, argument and evidence towards the application. The planning commission shall grant such a request by concluding public hearing and leaving the record open for an additional written testimony, argument and evidence. Persons that, persons who testify shall receive recognition from the chair, state their full name and mailing address, and if appearing in a representative capacity, identify who they represent. It's our presentation by the applicant.
Yes. Can you hear me okay? The mask?
Yeah.
Please speak loudly. It's work.
May be repetitive. I'll speak up. It's Rodney Dodd, D O Box four two seven, Cannon Beach. I am a resident of Breakers Point, I am on the board of directors and staff. Provide some of the, some of this information is repetitive. Like I said, this is our comment. The Breakers Point Development is providing additional confirmation stabilization, protection for building forty five consistent platforms. And it sits north of the Cola Creek at an elevation of approximately twenty five feet above the base of the slope bank. Can you hear me okay or say no more?
Go ahead.
Can you use the mask? Yeah. Clay, can you hear?
I'm, I'm, most of it. It is a little difficult, but I am hearing most of it.
I could step away from the podium and remove the mask or, or could speak louder. There, what?
I, I, I can hear you fine.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll speak up. At the time of the development, Breakers Point, the building forty five is about a hundred feet from the, from the bank. I think it's eroded and in January of twenty fifteen, the top of the slope of the bank ranged from approximately twenty eight to fifty feet from the building, the building footings. The fifteenth, the sixteenth erosion, there was an urgency based upon the exposure of the gas line as well as the foot, the toe of the slope bank. And through that, there was the process through immediate engineering to protect the deck, the utilities from further erosion and the clay burial structure was installed at the base for sanding fill in the base of the bank. Since that time, the bank has remained reasonably stable with additional filling and sand vegetation thrown back on the face of the bank. Separate from the creek bank stabilization project, and I'm just looking to see if the survey is on. Okay, so the location, you'll be able to see on the screen and in your packet of the sheet, the location of the sheet pile. It's a thirty foot long sheet pile barrier approximately fifteen feet from the foundation of building forty five and approximately twenty five feet from the top of the slope bank. The barrier is twenty feet tall and the top of the barrier will be about two feet below the Breakers Point lawn. And it's intercepting the slope of the line of the force of building and the deck as shown in the engineering report. It was a separate report that started with the installation of the clay burrito and it demonstrated where that line of support. Obviously, at the time, there was issues with the creek bank. Additionally, it provided some protection, obviously, to be able to get the wall closer to the line of support across the buildings is much more effective. So now with, with solid stabilization, we're able to position the support structure in the most effective location closer to the buildings. This also allows the positioning of the support structure further away from the Cola Creek bank, twenty five feet versus five feet, eliminating the risk of being exposed through erosion on the creek side of the barrier. I know there was a comment that Dan Terry had said that, look, anytime you put a barrier right up against the bank, there's going to be erosion. We agree with that. And he was going off on reports from January of twenty nineteen where the sheet pile was up against the, the top of the slope bank. Through that process, trying to understand where do you get the best location and sort out line of support and not to impact the slope bank was crucial. And so the additional piece of that is the, in answer, the question was asked, the gas company is taking responsibility for protecting that loss if it were to become exposed. It's currently not. If we get to that point, it's, it's, it's there. Additionally, in the event that the creek bank erodes to within twenty five feet of the building footings or ten feet from the sheet pile, we apply the sand fill mitigation processes standards in accordance with the emergency authorization provision of Oregon's Removal Fill Law. And again, when that sheet pile is up to get the bank, you, it, it, there's not enough precaution around it. Moving it closer to buildings, twenty five feet away of the bank provides a much better chance of protecting that. This was originally submitted through the building process. A building permit was, was approved. Then we were notified that the city of Cannon Beach required the Breakers Point submit this application under the shoreline stabilization zoning warrant. Then that ordinance states that if a project is for shoreline stabilization, the permit must be obtained from Oregon Parks Rep, the U S Army Corps of Engineers and the Oregon Department of State Land. We received non-jurisdictional letters from each of those entities indicating that we are outside of that area. It's ended up on the area. We moved it as far away from the bank as possible. It's not visible. It will not alter the shoreline. This is working with Mark Mead, Tom Morning, analyze the engineer that's installing with this design, the, the sheet pile barrier. We also recognize that, and the intent of this is not to stabilize the, the bank. A separate, separate project. We recognize that there is additional support to be made. We're finding a solution for that. Of course, it's separate. It's longer term. It's got to be harder. Whether it's, you know, a dynamic redevelopment, whether it's other things, it's a much longer process and there's a lot of parties that need to be involved in that process. So again, what we're looking at is putting that barrier in that line of force that if we go down the path of allowing that a, a soft bank to have overflow, then allowing that movement won't impact or impair a, the future potential movement of the, of building forty five of those, those five homeowners. I'm not sure Bruce has anything to add on that.
I'll ask other people in the audience. If you're, are you finished with your presentation?
I guess so.
Any questions or? Okay. Thank you. Are there any other presentations proponents for the project? Like to speak?
Bruce Francis, D O Box two four six, Cannon Beach. When I made this application in February of twenty nineteen, it was for a building permit to do construction to stabilize the land that building forty five rested upon. The building inspector, your building inspector came out, looked at it and quote his words was, this is a no brainer. To approve it, and he did within two weeks. The only reason that we are here is because the OM zone overrides that particular area and we have to look at stabilization of the bank. With the utilities no longer being in contention because the gas company has decided to bury them under the fill permit, which we had enacted once with the city. If it gets to twenty five feet within the footing, it only has to go two more feet and that twenty three feet from the footing, it will expose the gas line. The gas company will come down and fill to cover the utility. So as you can see, the erosion will never ever come anywhere near the projected site of the sheet pile where this barrier, two foot feet below the law and only fifteen feet from the footing of the building. The site of this installation is not in the jurisdiction of DSL. It is not in the jurisdiction of the Corps of Engineers. It is not in the jurisdiction of Parks and Rep. So therefore, I ask that it be considered as a building permit application. Thank you.
Are there other presentations by proponents? Are there any presentations by opponents?
I, we do have three that would like to speak.
Oh, are they here?
They are zoomed on.
Oh, I see.
I will bring in a good one first.
Yes, I am unmuted now. Can you hear me?
All right. Yeah. Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Brianna Goodwin and I am the Oregon Field Manager for the Surf Rider Foundation. I live in Yaha, but work with our members throughout the state. The Surf Rider Foundation is an environmental nonprofit that is dedicated to the protection and enjoyment of the world's ocean waves and beaches. And our North Coast chapter is based in Klotzup County. We have executive committee members in, that live in Manzanita, Cannon Beach, and Astoria. We're very concerned about this project's application and urge you to deny the permit. The Cola Creek estuary is designated as an essential habitat for salmon. Sheet pile and other vertical hardened structures will accelerate sediment transport at the margins of the estuary, furthering channelization and disrupting the habitat. These margins and the associated velocity of water is critical for salmon resting and rearing. Accelerated sediment transport will likely result in impacts to beaches, recreational users, and nearby property owners. Further, the project is seeking a solution for a predicted problem, not imminent peril to the property. The application itself states that the current non-hardened structure has kept the bank, quote, "reasonably stable." For these reasons and many others, we find this project inconsistent with statewide land use goals and the Cannon Beach Planning Commission should deny the permit. A forward-thinking solution to this problem involves a thoughtful process and well-engineered solution that engages the community, not a hasty hardened structure that will negatively impact salmon habitat, recreational users, local beaches, and adjacent property owners. Surf Riders worked with several experienced engineers with a working knowledge of non-hardened structures and are well-versed in community engagement. We look forward to working with the community and finding a long-term solution to this problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and next we would have Diana Turner.
Hi, guys. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. First, I would like to, I'm surprised that Ms. Fitzpatrick has chosen not to recuse herself. In the past, when Breakers Point applications have become before this council, she has recognized that she does have a financial interest in the property and the process, and she has done the right thing and retrieves herself. I wish she would have made that choice today, and I would like the record to show that I oppose that. If you look at past projects, you will see reams of letters from Breaker Point owners who claim that anything that happens at Breakers Point affects their financial well-being and the resale value of their property. So, though I understand she feels that this building is far enough away that she is not biased, I don't see how that is possible as an HOA member. So, I would like that to be part of the record. As far as this application, I find it to be very muddled. It is a mashup of a previous application that was addressing supposedly the gas line. I understand now that the gas line is not an issue and that they have decided that there is a foundation issue. However, all of the expert documentation is for this previous application. And while that might have been sufficient when Cannon Beach was a younger city and not run as professionally and the community was not as engaged and concerned about the long-term results of some of these planning decisions, that's not who we are or what this is about at this point. We all recognize that the estuary is important, and it's important, again, not to, only to our local community, but to everyone. And to say that this is not a shoreline stabilization project is disingenuous. This is a shoreline stabilization project that is buried. Perhaps it's one lying in wait for the future when the erosion that we all know will happen because we watch Ecola Creek. And then we have all the issues that Brianna has brought up. So, again, this application is not clean. If it is just for foundation, then go and do the work. Show us the models. Bring in the experts who are going to tell us, who are going to let us know that it will never reach that buried wall. And until we've done that, it doesn't make sense to approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. Okay, and next up, we have Bob Lundie.
You're muted, Bob. Can you hear me? No. Okay.
Yes.
I apologize for the fact that I had an interruption, so it may be that my, my concerns were addressed when I was away from the screen, but I will try to make this quick. First, it was not clear to me from at least what was in the packet, that there had been calculations that showed that there really was danger of this being affected by slumping. I understand in a general way what the, what the principle is there, but it wasn't clear from what I could see that, that there was an actual danger of it. Given that, if, if it's shown that there is a real danger of slumping there, it's not clear why they selected this particular length and height of a wall and why they wanted to put it at that particular distance. I, I understand why they moved it back, but why not push her back to the building? If, if those were already addressed while I was away, I apologize. But that's all I have to say at the moment.
All right, thank you, Bob. Kathy Walsh. Oh. I don't, I don't think she wants none of this.
Okay, she raised her hand.
So, are there any other presentations by opponents or proponents?
Those are the only ones that we received and I'm going to ask for.
Yeah. Okay. Any, any questions for staff? Staff, ask to this.
Do you have the applicant attempts to rebuttal or is that?
Yeah. Does the applicant wish to make any additional statements?
Bruce Francis, P.O., Box 246. Two concerns that I see there is one that Bob Lundie was asking. And the reason that we're no closer than 12 to 15 feet from footing is that when you put sheet piling in, you drive it down into the soil and you compact it. If you get any closer to the footing, you will cause subsidence of the building. So, 12 to 15 feet from the footing is as close as you can go without compromising the safety of the building. So that's why we're at 12 to 15 feet. The other concern I see is hard armoring of the bank. As we've said, we're 25 feet away, that's when the emergency clause comes in to fill. You will never, ever see this unless there's some catastrophic event. Also, if you want to be concerned with hard armoring doing detriments to fish in Cola Creek, let's look at the hard armoring that is all the way from the seawall, whale park, all the way to the bridge, back down to the properties immediately above Breakers Point plus the end of Large Street. And you will see that Breakers Point is the only property, I repeat that, it is the only property that is not hard armored. And we don't propose to hard armory, but we're suffering the consequences of everybody else having been allowed to hard armor their properties and protect them. We currently have a permit with the Corps of Engineers and with DSL. And this is an ongoing permit carried over from when we put burritos in. And we are looking at other options that will address erosion of the bank. That is a separate issue. And we welcome input from other authorities and the city to come up with a solution to stop the erosion of the Cola Creek Bank without hard armory. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Does anybody wish to continue this process? Okay, then that closes the public hearing and we will move to consideration of the project.
Daryl, please ask Clay if he can unmute.
Say that again.
Clay needs to unmute. I'm asking him to unmute.
Oh, I'm not looking at my mic to be said that way. Yeah, okay, I'm unmuted now. It shouldn't be.
Well, any further discussion?
Yes. Okay, well, I had a couple thoughts. For one thing, I don't see the danger that's required under the statute. I think rather it's a potential danger, and moreover, I don't see that this, there's enough evidence that this is any kind of a solution to the issue at hand here. I think that, I, I, I agree that this is actually a shoreline stabilization project disguised as a building permit. I do agree also that a long-term solution that engages all the affected parties and the best science available for a solution to erosion of the bank is what is needed, not a Band-Aid, which I believe that this project is.
I agree with Lisa about the Band-Aid. That's exactly what it sounds like to me, or putting a mask on the issue.
Well, the, the one thing that bothers me, I think, is if you put up a barrier, this barrier is probably the most unsightly thing you could add to the dooms, do views. And the other thing is that, yeah, it doesn't seem like a solution at all. The erosion is, is there and it doesn't, it, it doesn't appear to enhance anything. So anyways, that's my thoughts.
Well, this barrier won't even be seen because it will be below ground.
Well, are you saying that the sand is going to be stable around this barrier for, for, forever? I mean, that...
Well, I don't think any of us know forever what's going to happen.
Well, it's below the ground, but that's not to say that it's exposed. It's down the road.
Well, does anybody want to make a motion?
I make a motion to deny this application.
Could I just, could I just, I'm sorry, Lisa, could I just throw in one, one thought here?
Yes.
I, I think it's really important that we do more than say something needs to be done here. I think we need to put something in place to do something at this location. It's an issue that's come up before. It's an issue that's been attempted to be addressed. And while I don't like what's proposed tonight, I also don't like to say no and leaving it there. I think, and, and I don't know how we do it as a group, whether it can be included in this motion tonight, or we just have to come back to it. I just don't think we can let this go, or we're going to come back to it and back to it and back to it, and pretty soon, we're going to back them into a corner, or they'll be, we're not going to back them into a corner, they'll be backed into a corner relative to their options to secure that shore. So, you know, it, it wasn't reasonable, but one thought that came to me was, well, you know, maybe we could condition something like this. I mean, that, the idea of having a wall like that in there, I'm just, you know, it's, it's as awful sounding to me as it is to, you know, some of the people who are saying they're opposed to it, but I get it in terms of protecting that building and, and the foundations. What if we had a, what if we had a condition that said you have to put in a cobbled berm to make sure we never see that wall? It's one thing to say you'll push sand over the edge forever, for as long as it's needed. It's another to put in, in motion, a, a solution. Again, I think that's too complicated for us to vote on tonight, but I think we need to, as a group, as a city, be doing more than reacting on this issue. We need to be proacting, or it's an issue where we're not going to like the solution these people have put into, as that continues to erode. So I'm just going to put that out. The other thing I had, does anybody know when those other hard structures were put in place out there?
The burritos?
No, the hard structures.
Oh, oh. A long, a long time ago.
I don't, I don't, Clay, I'm sorry.
Pre, pre '77 or '9 or whatever that date is.
A long time ago, no.
Okay, before any of that. All right, that, I just wanted to throw that out there. I'm not willing to make a motion on that line. I think, I don't think we're prepared to do that, but I do think we need an asterisk next to this, and it needs to be on our agenda because I, we are reacting at this point and I, I think we're getting pretty close to the place where we need to proact.
Well, I, I think that that's part of our job is to react to an application. I mean, an application was submitted and people expressed why they were not in favor of it, and then, I mean, I, we all seem to agree that something has to be done, but we don't know what it is. I'm not going to vote on a cobbled, you know, wall because I don't know how that would affect anything. I'd be afraid to vote for that because I have no evidence or engineering background to support that.
I couldn't go for that, Lisa, tonight. I'm saying that we need to be thinking that way. We need to be thinking about how we can get some, something that's a long-term solution to that situation, not waiting for them to be in a position where they're out of alternatives, because then we'll run out of alternatives that we like anyway.
I mean, I, my reason was that everyone was in favor of the idea of there being a better long-term solution.
And I think we've had agencies like Surf Rider that's willing to help. I mean, she said that tonight in her presentation, so.
I, I think there's general agreement that, that something needs to be done at some point, but I don't think there's any agreement, especially through the correspondence that we've had here tonight, that anyone is backing this option. So, Joe, do you have anything to add?
Well, I, I asked earlier, I guess inappropriately, about the gas line and what was up with that, whether it's just going to be hanging out in the middle of, you know, wherever, because this isn't going to affect that gas line, which I consider kind of a danger.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
So this is a motion to deny the application.
Yes. Okay, let's call the roll.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Joe, your turn.
Yes, I, I know that.
Oh.
I, I, I support the denial.
Pardon me?
I support the motion to deny.
Yeah.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Kerr?
Yeah.
Mr. Knopf?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Epstein.
Chair Johnson?
Yes. Okay, motion is denied. Moving along, this is a court of judicial hearing regarding public hearing and consideration of P. 20-01 and V. 20-01 requests by the city of Cannon Beach for preliminary and final plot approval in association with a variance request. The city of Cannon Beach application for preliminary and final plot approval in association with the variance request to all of the partitionings of a substandard-sized parcel at Axolotl 51029 CB 00301 and 51029... sixteen dot oh four. Does anyone object to the planning commission's jurisdiction of this matter? Does any member believe he or she has a conflict of interest or a personal bias? Does any commissioner member have an ex parte contact or made a site visit?
Sorry, I can't hear, and this is my-
What's that?
It'll be the door.
I can't hear, and this is important to me itself.
Okay, is there staff report?
Yes. Subject property, invasion property, where the city's water line was discovered and property has been located over forty years ago. Subject property straddles the city limits where the eastern portion falls within the urban growth boundary of Potts County. The proposed partition would create a new parcel under Cannon Beach Municipal Code sixteen oh four fifty-four in ORS nine two ten, allowing the city unencumbered access to one of its main water lines. The city has requested variance under seventeen four thirty to permit the creation and transfer of the undersized parcel. The parent parcel, parcel one, will remain the ownership of the Miller Estate while parcel two has been transferred to the city. Parcel two includes three thousand three hundred and ninety-five square feet of vacant land running from the western property line of tax lot five one zero two nine TD zero zero three oh one to where the water line crosses tax lot five one zero two nine TA zero zero five zero zero. Portions of the property will be subject to mutual easement agreements to ensure access across the subject property to benefit the parent parcel in purpose. The city has asked for preliminary and final, there are no improvements proposed for the property. The city has secured access easement to benefit the parent property. In the criteria and finding section, I will, I explain quickly why it is necessary. We found, you know, that the water line ran on somebody else's property. We tried to, we discussed doing an easement with them, they did not want an easement, and so we were, it's requiring us to buy that property. And so it's a sliver of property. Unfortunately, we need to ask for a variance to allow that small parcel to be the regular lot size. And so petitions, like I say, are handled through the subdivision ordinance or an approval of the preliminary plat, followed by approval of the final plat. Other than the fourteen consecutive day of fuel periods, there are no time limitations for preliminary and final consideration approval. Some jurisdictions will handle these kind of things administratively, other parts of the country, some do this with a, you know, simply a lot line adjustment and things like that, other creations mechanisms for these things, and then some will make you go through a two-step process where you would have to take this to council afterwards. Ours only requires it to come back before you after improvements are made. We don't have improvements on this property, and none will be proposed for that. Let's see, yeah, and so the subject property is a vacant parcel, which includes one of the city's twelve-inch water mains. Oregon statutes and municipal code provide ability to partition that land through a sale or grant by a person to publicly, a public body for state highway, county road, city street, or other wider way of residence, and that's what we're utilizing here as part of the statute. The city requests a variance to allow access to underground utilities, which currently reside on private property without any form of easement granted to allow proper access. This request would alleviate this burden and allow the uninterrupted service of water to city residents. On finding the city's encroachment onto the Miller property, the city sought relief through an easement, but was legally advised to procure the property and grant full access for future protection of these vital resources. By not granting this variance, city risk exposures to damages to one of the city's main water, main lines, which could impact service delivery for a large segment of the population. Moving such a line would be very costly to the city and could require interruption in service to a portion of the city. Any questions you guys have?
So, how many, this is a twelve-inch water line, how many water lines, main water lines are in this area? I mean, is there more than-
Probably twelve inches that the city have, main, how is it coming off of that? I'm not sure, I mean, I can, I could research that, but not too many. I mean, twelve inches are, is the large size coming down, it's coming straight, you know, into the, this is the one that serves down from the corridor where it crosses into the midtown area and serves mainly this area, so.
And the only consideration for this is the ten thousand dollars, right? There's no, no promises, no future plating, nothing like that?
No.
Just the money, then the city owns that strip of property and that's it?
Right. We, like I said, we do allow them to, you know, use assets across, that's it.
So are you purchasing this property from?
Yeah, from the owner, and contingent of one of the property.
Okay, and there's no additional correspondence? Yeah. Okay, the pertinent criteria to be considered, I noted in the staff report and listed on the criteria sheet next to the west door, testimony, argument, and evidence must be directed towards those criteria or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or municipal code which person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statement and evidence sufficient to afford the decision makers increase an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal based on that issue. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant requests an opportunity to present additional testimony or evidence regarding the application. The planning commission shall grant such a request by continuing the public hearing and leaving the record open for additional written testimony, arguments, and evidence. Is there a presentation by the applicant? Yeah, okay. Is there anybody that would like to make any comments, either for or against this? Okay, and does staff have any additional things to add? Okay, we get a vote on this.
We have to have a motion to accept.
Yes.
Well, I move to accept this application. Great solution to a problem.
Second it.
Any further discussion? Okay, both call.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Knopf?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Burr?
Yes.
Chair Johnson?
Yes. Okay, send out the night.
Press the chat.
Okay, this is a quasi-judicial hearing regarding the public hearing and consideration of CD twenty dash oh one, request by the Dido Sorelli for cluster development location at one eight oh Coos Street. Sorelli application for cluster development with a variance request to allow for the conversion of three existing cabins into newly constructed additional unit for conversion into the cluster development. The property is located at one eight oh two street, map tax lot five one oh three one CB oh four oh two in residential moderate density zone. Property is owned by Paul Lou. The request will be reviewed against the criteria, the municipal code section sixteen dot oh four dot one three oh and three eight oh. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the planning commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any commissioner believe he or she has a conflict of interest or a personal bias? Has any member made an ex parte contact or a site visit?
Site visit.
Okay, is there a staff report?
Yes, first, I wanted to make sure that everyone got Ms. Walker's comments, status one to one in the criteria.
Okay, so background, this one, the applicant has proposed converting three of four cabins located on the corner of Pacific at Coos into long-term rentals, also demolishing and reconstructing the four cabins. The existing site conditions exclude the lot of four cottages, one of which falls on the property line and three other non-conforming structures in R one zoning district on the corner of Pacific Avenue and West Coos Street.
A multifamily housing or multi-unit housing is not permitted and yet the property is currently utilized as long-term rentals. The proposal does not follow the existing land use permitting process under existing Cannon Beach to propose. The only definition that Cannon Beach to accommodate this proposal fall within the cluster development or planned development realm within the subdivision section. However, since the applicant is not pursuing selling the cottages individually, no subdivision petition is technically considered. Other elements of that code are reviewed in this report. As its January twenty-third work session, the Cannon Beach Planning Commission reviewed cluster developments and workforce housing types within Cannon Beach as well as examples from other jurisdictions. Information from that work section is included in the package. There are three different review options for this unique proposal, planned development, cluster development, and planning amendment. Since condos are state process, the city will not be involved in that process. Under review as a cluster development, the applicant potentially cites the four individuals on the property, which would trigger the need for a variance to density parking and live arrangement standards. Variances, code section sixteen oh four four hundred, allows for a variance specific to cluster development, as noted by the attorney. The only difference between the CD and PD routes, should the commission choose to designate a proposal under planned development, the planned development order states the sites shall include not less than three acres of contiguous land, and the proposal would also require an approval of a variance of the minimum acreage requirement. Review as a planned development proposal would be a three-stage process. The CD process is a two-stage process of reviewing a tentative plan and a final plat. Beyond these options, given the city does not currently have a cluster development zoning district for cluster development definition within the zoning code, only a text amendment could provide another alternative to the CD or PD process. As discussed at the work session, a cluster development is the most straightforward approach in a tentative plan, need the approval of the planning commission. The applicant would have eighteen months to submit a final plat, which would also go through the city's planning commission for review. A final note, the applicant has proposed that neither a free deed restriction or workforce housing agreement, but some portion of the three units would stay affordable as part of the conditions of the project. While affordability is not directly contained in the code under the cluster development, providing affordable housing will largely go under the housing policy of the city conference committee. Both policies or department policies are generally in the next page and discussed. We also included cluster housing definitions and then some terminology. These aren't actually from our code language, but it was terminology, it's often affordable, historic structures, low-income housing, modern income. Terms are part of these when, when a workforce is, a housing situation is considered. In seventeen sixty, the cluster development, the proposal includes using existing structures as well as demolishing and reconstructing one of the cottages. The intent of the code was likely not consider, not considering the use of existing structures, but the new development should take attractiveness into account. The approval of the cluster development decide to take the existing structures as well as the proposed structure in terms of attractiveness of development into consideration. Should the cottages be sold in the future, a plat or condo plat would be needed to address item C. While planning commission reviews the proposal first, the applicant should be aware additional conditions of approval may be applied at the time of the design review board. There's the term net density, number of dwelling units per unit of land expressed is the number of square feet of land per dwelling unit. Net density for any lot is computed by dividing the net square footage of the parcel by the number of the dwelling units. The net square footage is determined by subtracting from the total square footage of the parcel, that which is deemed necessary for street dedication, the area of streets and common driveways, if any. And this one, of course, does not have streets and other things in consideration. The four existing cottages have a density of thirty-four point eight dwelling units per acre, given the lot size is five thousand square feet. With the additional square footage of a larger single-family dwelling after removal of the cottages, the density of the site does not change. The comprehensive plan, which guides the language of subdivision codes, specifies the density for R one zoning for eight dwelling units per acre. However, it should be taken into account, the net density guidelines within the subdivision, and there are careful discussions throughout the code to allow for higher density when affordable housing is sought, and with the state zoning guidelines of acquiring accessory dwelling units. And all R one districts, in our R one districts, would render the city's R one districts at a net density of sixteen dwelling units per acre, double its own comprehensive language with guidelines. The applicant is seeking a variance for density to maintain the current density. And so, there's a table there with the diagram in the site plan. On to page eight, where we discuss that the majority of its neighborhood, which west of Pinlock is zone R one, east of Pinlock provides for higher density, and zone R three. Rezoning the area is a possibility, however, for development at just one site, it could be considered spot zoning is not a recommended approach, given the process would be expensive for the development as proposed, as usual, not changing use from the residential usage. Further down, I would like to mention, the current site conditions are nonconforming and a variance, and so one of the conditions they'll talk about, I'm sure, is that one of the units is actually over the lot line and the others are within that set of current valuable setbacks, and so all of them are in this kind of nonconforming status. And so, they're seeking variances for each of those conditions, which would be setbacks, parking, and everything. For closed site layout with total thirty percent lot cover, a minimal increase from the foot grant to the existing structure. Closed layout with the addition of a second story or a new single-family have floor ratio of point four two. Building height of the new structure was not provided, though would meet the heat criteria, which is the heat twenty-four average. Parking requirements for the R one will require simply two for a residential structure, and multifamily units are not permitted. The applicant is seeking a cluster variance to allow for an increase in off-street parking, allow for five nine-by-eight inch off-street parking stalls. Each stall is equipped with access from the adjacent streets. On page ten, in addition to the setback requirements noted above, a variance from the off-street parking is required. Parking standards for four single-family units would require two spaces for each unit. However, this would be more in keeping with the multifamily unit, which would require one space for the studio and one point five for upstairs, or the five spaces that have been requested. It should be noted that the current type configuration doesn't provide adequate off-street parking, as it forces parking to the right of ways, but a proposal would eliminate much of that need. And then I speak a little bit about the nonconforming lots and uses. And I believe I outlined in the planning commission action, the various conditions that, to contemplate as part of the action. A review of these applicable criteria- as it forces parking to the right of ways, but a proposal would eliminate much of that need. And then I speak a little bit about the non-conforming lots and uses. And I believe I outlined in the planning commission action the various conditions to contemplate as part of the action. A review of these applicable criterias based upon this. And then you would, of course, get the second meeting after the design review.
Okay.
Any questions?
What is the median of income in Cannon Beach? I was going to ask that same question.
It's not done by the city of Cannon Beach. The income category is taken from the calendar. I can get that for you. I don't have it currently. Maybe Vito will have those comments. But I can look it up possibly while we are doing that. But I do know that it might be actually in the agreement that would give you guys a reference point. So we can look at that, how to determine as part of that agreement.
Yeah, one of the fun things about being on Zoom here is I can get on Google really quickly. In 2017 in Clatsop County, Oregon, the median household income was 49,828.
Right, thanks. Can you say that one more time? Forty-nine?
Forty-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight.
Can we round that off to 50,000?
I'll go, I'll second.
Just kidding.
And that was in 2017? That's the most recent?
That's what this says here, 2017.
Jeff, so they're requesting cluster development approval. And if I read this, even if they get the cluster development approval, then they're still going to have various requests for parking, dimensions, everything.
Those would all be part of this. That's what they're requesting is part of this, to ask for those as part of the cluster development. Cluster development allows for what's called a cluster development variance. And then with that, they're seeking those others, parking, setbacks. And that's how it's done through this cluster development, is that you guys come up with those as kind of conditions of this approval. So they have to build to those.
Okay, the pertinent criteria to be considered are noted in the staff report listed on the criteria sheet next to the west door. Testimony, argument, and evidence must be directed towards that criteria or other criteria in a comprehensive plan or municipal code which the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statement or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-makers and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal based on that issue. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional testimony, argument, evidence regarding application. The planning commission shall grant such a request by continuing the public hearing and leaving the record open for additional written testimony, arguments, and evidence. That's our presentation by the applicant.
Vito Thrillie, 318-97, Maxwell Land, Park City, Oregon, 97102.
Vito, can you come up here just for the phone?
Yes. As was noted in the initial presentation, this project has been through a number of reviews with the planning department and in the work session we had a number of months ago to look at this current lot in an R1 zone with the four current cabins. And so what we're requesting is a variance for a cluster development on a pre-existing cluster development that was built prior to these codes being established in the city of Cannon Beach. So these four cabins were built in 1950, each approximately 300 square feet. And so the proposal is to keep the current conditions of the cabins, but improve the site by removing the east cabin, which is over the property line and actually built on Cou Street, which would allow us the availability to provide the five off-street parking, the three, four, the existing west cabins that would be kept and maintained, and then the new structure that would be built on the east of the property, which would adhere to current zoning guidelines with both setbacks and high restrictions. The variance is mostly for the cluster development, but in doing so, we need to also apply for the density as well as the setback variance on the three cabins to the west because none of them adhere to current city guidelines for zoning. I think most of the other items have been discussed in the initial work session as well as in the existing pre-application that Jeff just went over. So I guess if there's any questions, should I ask for that now or?
Sure, go ahead.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So the cabin that she developed, two stories tall, is that a rental cabin as well? Is that for sale?
None of these cabins will be for sale. All cabins have long-term tenants in them. I believe there's one, if not two of them rented currently that are in good enough conditions. The other one, the other two are in pretty bad shape. And the one on the east that will be removed is over the property line. So none of them will be sold. The new one being built would be the owner's cabin.
So what is the, what insurance, are there going to be in the final plan that this would stay a low-income housing or workforce housing? Does that be a deed restriction about?
That's where we've gone back and forth with means of planning departments. And it seems like the city in a whole is looking at what those requirements are with affordable housing or not. Currently, there's no submitted documents with a deed restriction to this property. So we're asking for a variance request for a cluster development. And then if there's conditions of approval that there needs to be a deed restriction on this property is what Jeff Adams and myself and the client have been looking into.
So the cabin that's going to be demolished, is there anybody living in there now?
Currently, there is someone living in that one now.
Well, there is.
Yeah.
What would be the new square footage of the one that would be?
It would be a total of approximately 1,000 to 1,200 square feet. And the footprint, it would be two stories. It would be a footprint of around 500 square feet. And each cabin right now is around 320 square feet. So it would be triple sized.
Would that be a long, I guess, the big cabin, the two-story, you said it's going to be lived in by the owner?
The new, yeah, the new cabin, the two-story, would be the owner's cabin that would not be rented. The three other cabins would continue to be rented.
Would it be a short-term rental?
No, it would not be. It would be, I don't even think it's allowed for our initial conversations. There would be no short-term rentals on this property. Only long-term rentals and then one owned by the owner and just exclusively used by the owner. But I think that was one of the conditions of approval that we talked about, that it would be granted that there would be no short-term rentals on this property. And it's not the intent of this.
And would the owner still want to do this project if we said that there had to be a deed restriction?
Yeah, I believe so. Yeah, he purchased the property with its unique condition. And I've worked with a number of clients that have looked at this property. And it's one of the unique lots in Cannon Beach in that area especially, where it's built 70 years ago with four cabins out of those.
I know. It's wonderful. I think it's great. I'm happy it's going to be preserved. But I just want to make sure that if the commission wants to approve it, that there's some, you know, for me, it would be important that there was something in writing that said that it had to stay low-income or workforce.
Yeah, and we talked about what that criteria would be, whether if it goes to workforce or if there would be a percentage of the amount of cabins, like let's just say 25% or 50% that would go to workforce rates. You know, I don't know what that guideline looks like. And there hasn't been a submitted deed restriction with this application.
What would be the difference if you didn't ask for a cluster development, but just tore down one of the cabins and rebuilt it?
It's our code in an R1 district, as soon as you have a second kitchen, that has to be either an accessory dwelling unit in this area or it's non-conformant, illegal. So that's what is the challenge and what's happening, you know, with these small cottages and trying to preserve them. You know, we judge dwelling units by kitchens, working kitchens and the other things that have to go along with that. But that's really kind of the indicator. So if you want these to be places of habitation, which is a dwelling, then you're going to add kitchens. And once you have that third kitchen, it's, you know, illegal. The second one is an accessory dwelling unit, right? And so you have to get that approved as well. So there's steps of approval, but they're currently in non-conformance is what. So this is that solution that kind of brings those together and says, here's an alternative. Like Vito said, this is a pre-existing cluster development in some terms. This is what a cluster used to look like. And so, and they're now just trying to, we're trying to, through our new code or this planning code, this is probably the best tool we have, is the way I see it, unless Bill has more to add or thoughts.
No, you summarized it fairly well. What we've got is a non-conforming situation. And depending on what they did and how they did it, they may not be able to rebuild, you know, but there are other ways. And so the simplest way is this is the roundest hole that the city has for the square peg, for the round peg. It's not completely round, but it's as close as we get to make it make sense under the code.
Is it possible?
Let me go.
Go ahead.
Is it possible to have the deed restriction say that it's 100% except for the owner's place that the other three cabins are?
I think that's, I think that's a simple, I need to talk to the client and get back, but I think that would be simple. I know right now currently, one of them is occupied by someone that works in the community. And that's the owner's intention is to instead of tear down these four cabins and build a 3,000-square-foot house like the surrounding neighborhood. He would like to preserve these. And I think in doing so, it's hard to tell because Cou Street is actually paved in gravel much narrower than what it should be platted to. So when you drive down the street and you look at it, all the yards and where the cars are are actually on Cou Street. And as you can see with the property diagram, by removing that east cabin, it allows off-street parking. So I think it preserves what the intentions of the original build were, but improves the site for safety when these are, I mean, right now only one, kind of two are occupied. But when you have, you know, four to five people staying there, it would be a lot of clutter on the street as far as like traffic on the street.
Can I point out one thing because Mr. Skans or Skans is also on the call and has his engraved, I know he had called and asked some questions. One of the questions he has, which I don't think Vito has spoken to and I have it in my staff report, is that the new store, the new structure, the two-story structure, if you notice, that is proposed to be at the appropriate R1, five-foot setbacks from that northeast corner on both sides, keeping that 15-foot setback on the corner lot of Pacific and Couste. So that's going to, you know, he was questioning where that's going to fall and why it's there, you know, in that corner. Well, that's one of the reasons is that it's a corner lot and so it has to be, and normally would hold that to a 15-foot setback on Pacific and Couste Street. So I just wanted to bring that up. And then if we get to the public comment section, if you want to allow Mr. Skans to ask questions or comment, just let him know.
Vito, this is Clay Newton speaking. Two questions. You've mentioned a couple of times in the application, five parking spots. I'm looking at a site survey here on my screen. I only count four.
I think that might have been, we are transferring files back and forth for this presentation. As you can see to the, call it the east, the southeast, that would be an additional fifth parking space there that's not noted on this site plan.
Okay.
So there's just a technical error on this plan.
And then?
So there would be five 9x18 parking spaces.
Okay, thank you. The second question has to do with this concept of affordability. When you presented this idea last time, we were all very enthusiastic, but something kind of set with me last time that I thought, well, that could be a tripping point. I'll bring it up now just for your comment for our consideration. I'm on page five, under the terminology of affordable. If, and again, I haven't, I don't know the median family income today in Clatsop County, but let's just say it's at or near $50,000. And Jeff, will you help me with this math? Make sure I'm running through it properly. I'm now in the last sentence of that paragraph, first paragraph, trying to figure out where to start. "In the case of rental housing, housing that is affordable is housing for which the monthly rental amount plus utility costs do not exceed 30% of the adjusted income for a household whose gross income is 50% of the median household income adjusted for household size." Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong in this math. Would you then take our estimated 50,000, divide it by two for 50%, and multiply by 0.3 to come up with the rent you could charge for these cabins?
Yeah, that would be, that's at least the starting point. That's how you would get that kind of AMI number and then you have a percentage off of that usually, right?
I don't remember what you said last time, Vito, in terms of rent, but I do remember it was either 1,200 or 1,400. And that might have been off the cuff. But the reason I bring this up is just to make sure that this is something that is financially feasible for you because the math, I'm running there, I'll take 50,000 divided by two, it's obviously 25,000, multiply by 0.3. Whoops. And divide 12, that's $625 a month. Did I do that right, Jeff? I don't know if you have a.
Yeah, I have $625 too in my mouth. I think the initial 1,000 to 1,200 was a direct reference to the similar, call it affordable workforce housing that was built at SeaLark. There's some of those, you know, current ones that have gone through this commission. And we were using that as like a baseline. So there hasn't been this math until tonight. But we were using similar properties that have been approved recently for workforce and using that as a baseline.
Is it safe to say that?
I don't know how those figures were determined.
Well, those were done, like I said, to a certain percentage of AMI. And then I would say that with those, it's also done by how many bedrooms per unit. So it's a bedrooms calculation as well. And so each unit, the rental fee is charged to this certain level for this size of unit. And so, you know, that is definitely something Clay that I think, these units are, like Vito said, range from 320 to 288 square feet. What we can do is compare those to what SeaLark is currently doing and kind of give you guys for guidance at, you know, if you'd like to have that as one of your guidelines.
Definitely.
For that deed restriction.
And are there only one bedroom in each of those cabins?
There's one bedroom and I'm just not familiar with the rates of the affordable breakdown and whether that accounts for, you know, a single person or two people who are living there and how those numbers are calculated to lease rate. So I'm not as familiar with that breakdown.
Well, we learned with the SeaLark that they only have to remain.
Yeah, for 10 years or?
10 years for the low income.
Yeah, and then they can, and then it's lifted.
And then it's lifted. Will that also lift the fact that they can be daily rentals or any of that kind of information in regards to it?
I'm not sure. I know that, I know.
Or BBRAs?
I know for a fact that this property, outside of the affordability rate, that the goal of this is to have long-term rentals on the site and not deal with any short-term in ownership of this property.
But what you're asking is if the same restriction against short-term will also expire after 10 years, just like, just like the affordable housing did in SeaLark. Yes, that's what I'm saying. Are we okaying something? No, I mean, I hope, I wouldn't want to okay that. Couldn't you, couldn't you change that? Say 30 years, 50 years?
It depends, don't know where the 10-year came from on. It depends, don't know where the 10-year came from on SeaLark. I assume it's some part of the financing that went into building it. And that's where, that's where the 10-year came from. If it's a deed restriction imposed by the city on that property, we can make it 20 years, 50 years perpetual, you know, whatever the city wants to do. Of course, the future city commission could decide, you know, or city planning commission could decide to change it. But, you know, there's, you can make it perpetual, you can do what you want.
Okay, one more question. How tall is the cabin?
The cabin?
I didn't want to.
The new cabin? It'll be under the, I mean, it'll, it'll be a two-story, but it's narrow. So I'm guessing it'll probably be in the range of 24 feet tall because it's such a narrow footprint. So we'll limit the height because it doesn't have much width for the roof line.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Are there any other presentations by proponents? Are there any other presentations by opponents?
Like I said, you know, it's, it's up to you guys if you allow Paul to comment.
Who?
Oh, Mr. Skans, you got his hand raised.
Okay, okay. You want to connect with him?
I am connected. Can you hear me?
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you for letting me, I just have a few questions. Thank you for letting me talk to you guys. I, the first question I have is in, in the packet, there's an exhibit A1, received on April 7. And the way I'm reading this goes, I don't know if this is the most current request for variance or not, but it, there's some comments in here that, or one comment specifically that, no, two comments, that kind of go against what the presentation has said. First is a variance request number two, description of the proposed building material plans pertinent to the variance request. Plans include renovating three west cabins by expanding the footprint to the north within the required setbacks. Now, if that's true, that means that those 200 square foot or 300 square foot cottages could extend back to 15 feet of the property line and kind of reduce the concept of having a cluster development. And I was wondering if this request for variance is still valid or not.
Yes. To speak to that, the current west cabin has been added on to about an additional like four to six feet. I think it's four feet further to the north than the other, the two middle cabins as notated. So it's 320 square feet versus the 288. And so the plan was to have the three cabins all be uniform. So it'd be adding that additional, call it 60 square feet.
Okay, so the diagram is currently incorrect in the proposal. Is that, would that be correct? You want to?
Yeah, so the, the proposal would actually have all three cabins being the same size as the current one on the west property, which is at 320 square feet.
Okay.
Versus the middle two that are currently 288 square feet.
Okay. So that, the, okay, thank you. Thank you for agreeing for that. I do have some other comments. Can I add some of my comments to the meeting?
Continue.
Okay. So there was a reference tonight about a square peg and a round hole, making it fit. And I think that this request is really a square peg not into a round hole that doesn't really fit. From the supporting documents that was, was submitted from North, it was at South Carolina. And then also I researched some other cluster developments within Oregon, and particularly the one, the one that I, that was easy to find was the one in Oregon City. And from what I understand, the cluster development concept, and even in your zoning requirements for new construction, but the cluster development concept is to have a centralized area where typically the main entrances of the home open on to a common court, courtyard, if you will, to make it kind of, in, in large communities, to make it a little smaller pot, if you will, of, of homes, looking out at each other. People could sit on their, the concept is people could sit on the front porch, talk to each other within that, you know, across that common area. And in this proposal, it really doesn't really fit into that, because they're just going to have their back porch entrance onto that area. So that's one of the comments. The other is that most of these cluster developments are in a much larger lot. And that's why they need the variance. And a lot of them are typically on a 10,000 square foot lot, double this, which allows them to have access from whatever street they want to, you know, ingress on to the property or also allows them to, to have this common area. And this request is really reducing that down to the current R1. And as the staff comments in the documents, they were, they recommended not to change the zoning, but to leave it as an R1, which would basically mean property being as is, from what I understand. So really, it's kind of trying to fit a cluster, what I'm trying to get at is just trying to fit a cluster unit into, which is typically large, 10,000 square feet, into this half of space. So, which is, I think, might not be the best choice. The, the other item was, was the staff said is the, the net acreage for an R1 is really much lower than it is supposed to be for this new proposal, which I guess you guys are aware of. That can, I think, also be adjusted to a variance. The off-street parking requirement that is typically for residential is like, it says in the documents, one car, one space, no, excuse me, for residential, it's two spaces per unit or home. And so typically this one, if it was to really just be brought up the code without moving the home, should really have maybe two, four, six, eight parking spaces. Having the two park, four, five parking spaces as is now, really is going to give the, the appearance of this lot to, to be, you know, on the streets, really just on one corner, just driveways. There's basically, there's going to be more driveways entrances for the parking spaces than any of the other lots in the, the local area, which kind of goes against the, I call it, colony look that we try to maintain in Cannon Beach. So that's kind of an issue that I, I don't know if it would really work or not. And the question that I, the question that, that I had also was that it, I thought that there was a requirement that if you increase the, if alterations in excess of 50% of the fair market value, there's a requirement to bring the property up to code. And I don't know if that applies to this or not. That's why I brought that up.
You may be talking about nonconformity.
What's that?
That's a nonconforming structure, I believe, is what you're referring to there.
Can I, speaking?
Mr. Skans, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Paul Skans, 123 West Coos.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So in looking at this, it, it appears to me that this common area, although it looks kind of like it might look on the proposal, it's really not going to be that large once a home is built. The final thing I wanted to, to comment on is, I guess there's no, I, I understand it's called an overlay that exists for cluster developments in the, that has a detail, that has detail in it for Cannon Beach. And in some of the, the cluster developments I saw, the homes had a requirement of being one and one-half stories high to keep the continuity and the look of the cluster unit have a little conformity and let, let it fit in. I'd like to, to propose that Cannon Beach look into that also, so that the two-story home come in as a one and one-half story home, like the other cottages, if this variance is approved. That way, the whole cluster would have a homogeneous feel to it and really have more of a, a, a community look. So that's all, that's all my comments right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Are, are there any other presentations to be made by proponents or opponents?
Vito, would you want to respond?
I mean, I can respond to the items that were noted. I think a big part of, just a general response is that this isn't a request to do a cluster development from ground up. So a lot of the guidelines and criteria that you mentioned related to common area and the configuration of the, of the cottages on the lot, I think would relate more to if we were proposing for a new development of cluster houses in the community. There is a level of charm to these cabins on Coos Street. I mean, they were built 70 years ago and it is a unique situation. There's no south, call it front yard on these properties. So the common area, as denoted, it's not listed on this plan, it would be the backyards, which would become the common, own, own property by, by the residents of this, of this development. Again, the second comment was about approving a 10,000 square foot lot, or a 10,000 square foot lot requirement. Again, this is why we're submitting the variance, because this is a 5,000 square foot lot with these cottages that were built 70 years ago. And it, it seems like in Cannon Beach that this, this is a, a, a need and a necessity for the residents to have more housing and density. So it's, it's a benefit that whoever built these back in the day chose to do this, because I think it, it serves a good purpose for Cannon Beach. The off-street parking, we had talked about as part of this variance is, is treating this almost like multifamily, so there'd be one parking space for dwelling and then providing two for that, the new residents at the northeast corner. So that would be totally five. Currently, there's no parking on site with the configuration. All residents are parking off, are on, sorry, on Coos Street instead of off-street parking. And the criteria about the two-story versus a one and a half story, I mean, looking at cluster developments, there's a lot of options and availability. It, it just seems like that's kind of a preference by each community on what those guidelines are. So I'm, I'm not sure how to respond to that, but I think that, that the goal of this is to keep the charm and it's the reason why the owner of this property purchased the property, because he wanted to preserve it. It is in, in the need of restoring. And so the goal of this is, is to keep the charm of the property, but just enhance the parking, enhance the common area, and then provide the required off-street parking.
So looking at the map up here, on the north side of where the cabins are, does that property go to the street behind or is that?
The street is, the, the street is the south and west, so the bottom in the left, there is a, there's an adjacent R1 lot, tax lot to the north, to the, up to the top of the page as well as to the east of the page. So that would be the new cabin at the northeast corner on the top right of the lot. That would adhere to the five-foot setback on the north, the five-foot setback on the east. It's a 15-foot setback on the south, but I moved the building back 18 feet to allow for the off-street parking space.
So the, in the, that would be the northwest corner, those are two houses there?
Those are the parking spaces.
Those are parking spaces?
Yeah.
Okay.
Vito, Mr. Kearns brought up the parking from an aesthetic standpoint. Is, can you think of a material or a construction of those, of those lots or the spots that was not asphalt that would be viable for your proposal?
We could, we could certainly look into the use of grasscrete or softer parking strip that would more tie into the, to the rest of the neighborhood with one, call it one drive aisle.
What, what did you call it? I missed that. Grass?
I'm sorry. There's, there's a use in the, in Cannon Beach, it's called grasscrete, which is a, it's a, it's a pervious concrete paper that grass can be planted through. So it, from a period, it looks like a, a grassy yard, but has the stability to park a car on it without disrupting the, the grass.
I see. Thank you.
So do we know, is there one of, of those types of surfaces on Bunborough?
The grasscrete?
Yeah.
Finally, there's one on Bunborough. Another good example is one on Timlock down in Total Bottom. There's a few on Timlock there, along the road.
Okay. Does the applicant wish to make any final statements? Nope. Okay. Then we'll close the public hearing and move for consideration.
And I would note that the applicable criteria really under the cluster starts begins or really is the guiding one is for the variance. And that's on, starts on top of, or bottom of page nine goes to 10, and talks about the qualified, will constitute desirable, stable community dollars, can carry out purposes of the conference plan of the guard of preservation matters, and is qualified to be in harmony with the deed criteria. So, that's Joe.
Even if he's not here.
Joe, did you have a question? Or are you just?
Spawning of bread.
Run the loudspeaker.
So Jeff?
Yes.
What would we be approving tonight?
So, so I would ask that you turn to page 12, because those are all of the, under the planning commission act, action. I've listed there those things that you're seeking the variance for, beginning with the density. Like I stated, they're not truly asking for an increase in these, because of the, you know, the nonconforming structures that are there are at that density. But we do need to make the finding or the conditions as a part of the condition of the approval that the variance allows four units per acre. And you can state that so that that's, that's the most that they can ever build today. Does that make sense?
I think this is a really great project. I think that a lot of, you know, sort of uncomfortable shifting around here that, that makes me a little bit uncomfortable. But the reason I accept it is because of the pre-existing condition of the lot. I mean, it's very unique to Cannon Beach. It's a really, it could be a huge addition to the community to have some more affordable housing. And I think it's, all the massaging of, of the, of the different ordinances is just a little squishy for me, but, but.
Yeah, no kidding.
I think it's very creative, the way it was done. I mean, it's amazing, all the different locks that were moved to somehow make this fit in. And the only thing I would say is I would definitely want as a condition that this remained, you know, you know, that it was written into the deed that this had to be low-income slash workforce housing. And that, that would be my big concern, because of course, I don't want to see 20 years down the line, this becoming, you know, Airbnb rental units or, you know, so that it would remain only for rent, no short-term rental, only long-term rental.
And I'm glad you brought that up, because this is a tentative approval. So you would give tentative approval tonight with the conditions to follow. He would come back with you with that agreement before you sign off.
Right. So that's my motion.
I'd like to see grasscrete added for the driveway.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Permeable driveway surfaces.
Yes.
I'd like to talk about this just before, before voting, if everyone doesn't mind. Jeff, one of the things I'm concerned about is we've seen the downside of where a planned development can be taken. And I too like the idea of this cluster development for this specific project from an aerial perspective, but some of the details I struggle with on this, what I don't want to do is say, oh yeah, let's go ahead and approve this. And then we walk into a situation where it seems like we're retrading, because while I've said, or we voted to approve four lots on this, I come back and, we come back and say, but that building, the new building can't be that big. It's on the same footprint, it's the same density, but not that tall. So I just want to make sure that we're not walking into a position where, one, we end up where that can be done with or without our will, and, and, and two, we're not giving the wrong message on this, because I'm pretty, I don't like that idea of a two-story building on there. I had thought one story, Mr. Kearns had mentioned a story and a half, maybe there's some compromise, but I don't think that fits the, the character of what we're trying to do. And remember, this is not, this is squeezing a lot of, a lot of housing on one lot. You know, it's cute, the way it sits there with those houses. What's a two-story structure stacked and they're going to do? I don't know that that will be cute any longer. What's it going to do when you have a bunch of parking out front? I think we have to be very careful about saying yes to this, and all of a sudden, it, what went from cute looks like stacked cordwood. And I'm not, I think it could be done well, I'm just concerned it, it won't. And I don't want to send the wrong message to, to the owner at this by saying, yeah, we're open to this cluster development, and then come back and say, yeah, but not this or that. So do you have any suggestions there? Because I definitely like the cluster development. I, I think it's a good idea. I have some issues with it as it's proposed right now, for this specific problems.
What about a more specific proposal? Would you, if they came back with a few of the things that we've talked about, written, you know, changed in some way, or written differently, you know, I mean, I don't think it's obviously not going to be a done deal tonight, because we don't, you know, but the, you know, we're, we're trying to avoid a Nicholson thing, to be frank. I mean, no one wants to see that happen again, you know, and, and just, and sneakily write an easement in without informing anybody. I mean, that was just an absolute travesty in every single way. And so we don't want to see that happen, so.
And so this is the, you know, you're just giving, and tonight, a tentative approval. List those conditions that you want to see, right, as part of that.
Things we'd like them to come back with a proposal that, that has these things, these things in it.
Yeah.
Because maybe, maybe the owner won't go for that, I don't know.
Right. And, and you also have, once this is approved, it will need a design review board agreement. So you have a second, where those have to be site, landscape plan, architectural plan, all those have to be.
And for these, though, that there's no sneaky easements in it.
Yeah, and that's your.
Well, that's clear.
Beware the nose of the camel.
Yeah.
I, I have some, I have some concern about whether we call it affordable, low income, moderate income, I mean, those mean different things. So I think.
And, and Barb, are you okay, though, with the applicant and us coming back with those terms like CLAR, at least giving you guys something that you can measure against of what you're.
Yes.
So that's, that's all I'm asking tonight.
Jeff, I have, I have concerns about that. The city does not have a policy in place. You're going to have to create one, you're going to have to manage it. And I, I think it, it can be done, but it is, it's another one of many things that is not, that's cloudy in this proposal. I tried to come up with something that I thought might address it. One idea would be just to say there's never going to be short-term housing on this, and let the market decide what those rents are. That's something we know and understand and can enforce. Putting in a new policy, putting in, you know, new enforcement and trying to get us to understand, and you up to speed with, you know, putting it into policy, it seems like it's a, that's going to take a while. And, you know, there are going to be mistakes in, in putting that together. I don't know enough about it to, to feel comfortable without a lot of work. And I know we don't have anything in the city of Cannon Beach right now, so I'm concerned about that. That part of this provision. I don't know how other people feel about just saying, hey, let the market dictate what, what a 288 square foot cabin rents for in Cannon Beach on a long-term basis. But that, that might be one way to resolve that issue.
I have some concerns about this whole project. And that is, if I were to come in with a lot like this, 500, 5,000 square foot lot, laid out with plan to make something cute like this, what chance would I have of getting that accepted? This is, this looks like a project in which an accessory dwelling, or three or four accessory dwellings are driving an argument to add a regular, standard Cannon Beach style 1,200 square foot house. So that everything else can be three accessory dwellings on one lot. I mean, it just goes against so much of what this thing is zoned for, and what the neighborhood is zoned for, that, you know, if, if anything, I would leave the fourth cabin there and add some parking and say, you know, this is an established lot and established housing that has, has been here since before the code was put together and the comprehensive plan was passed. And therefore, you know, you can fix these, these four cabins up, you know, add some parking, upgrade a little bit, and, and it's legal and it's got a basis. What's going on here, I read this proposal, you know, and I'm told that, oh, there's stuff all the way through the comprehensive plan that justifies what we're doing. Well, I, I think that I could find something to justify through the comprehensive plan, no matter how screwed up it was. And frankly, I don't think this looks all that cute. I mean, the cabins sitting there, you know, if, you know, spruced up and, and the lot made a little more functional, maybe, could be fine. But what's going on here is this race for affordable housing, and at the end of the line, we're going to have a very strange-looking lot and, and a two-story house stuck on it, screwing it up. So I, I'm, I will not vote for any of this. It's just, it's badly argued and, and it's trying to get something that doesn't have to be gotten. And, and I don't think anybody else coming in, presenting a proposal like this on a blank lot would have a ghost of a chance. And, and, and that's largely because what it is, is a workaround of rules rather than a support for the comprehensive plan.
Well, I, I don't agree with that at all. I think that, first of all, I don't think you can make, I think that's comparing apples and oranges, saying somebody coming in with a blank lot, of course, that wouldn't happen in the same way. This is not a blank lot. This is a lot with four, what I would consider historic cabins on it. And, and I just, you know, I, I don't know about the two-story house, because I haven't seen a picture of it, I haven't seen a rendering, I haven't seen any ideas. So I'm not willing to say that I think it's not going to work aesthetically until I see something. And I, I do, I, I think this is a unique situation. And I, and I, because they're pre-existing, you know, the owner of that lot could tear them all down and put up a huge mega mansion. And, and if, if they chose, then we'd have just another big, big-ass mansion sitting in the middle of, of a little town, you know. So I don't see, I mean, to me, this is a way to keep these historic cottages viable. And I understand the motivation for the two-story house, because this person who owns the lot wants to live there, and a 1,200 square foot house is not a huge house. It's not considered a huge house at all. It's, it's a moderate-sized house. So I, I just, you know, I, I want to see more. I'm not willing to say that it's a bad idea or vote against it. I, I'm willing to vote for more information, to find out if, again, if the owner's even interested in this. This is asking a lot, for someone who could build a mansion and sell it for a lot of money.
So, do we have a motion to approve density, the parking lot that they proposed, tentatively proposed, and then?
Tentatively.
Further detail and deed restriction.
All of that stuff fleshed out, all of that low-income workforce housing stuff fleshed out. So it's not, it's a tentative approval, it's not an approval.
Right.
Well, it's either an approval or it's not approval. You know, I, it seems to me that, that this is a half-baked proposal. And, and before we approve something, or tentatively approve something, and sort of go down that, you know, as I said, nose of the camel route, I'd like to see a truly fleshed out with the, the rules cited clearly as to what's going on. Because I, you know, I read through this thing three times, and I never felt satisfied going through it, that, that it wasn't really just an effort to work around, you know, the, the code, work around the comprehensive plan, picking, you know, pick, pick sections of the comprehensive plan and the spirit of the comprehensive plan, and, and, and ask us to, quote, approve something, so the design review board can approve something. And, you know, we'll be down the road a ways and stuck with, well, you know, they fuss. I want them to fuss right out front, you know, when it comes to us, you know, tell us, this is what it's going to be. Because, you know, this little schema here is so much like the Nicholson scheme. And, you know, I do not want to see us go down that route again.
Well, you know I don't, and I don't see that as.
No matter how, how cute this is. Well, think about it a while.
I have. I, I've looked through it really closely, and to me, it's a creative way to save these cabins. That's how I'm thinking of it. And still stay.
There's, there are all kinds of ways to save the cabins. You just put another, you know, leave all four cabins there, maybe add a little parking to, you know, soothe our feathers, and it would go right through.
Why do you think the owner would want to do that?
Red it up or?
He's not making any money. Well.
Well, they would be making some money, theoretically.
These altruistic folks.
Jeff, are you suggesting that we put, that we might consider a motion that only partially, well, partially is not the right word, that says we're open to this sort of density on the lot, but we need additional details before approving the specifics of this site in, in layman terms?
Yeah, I would, I would suggest that the motion includes a development agreement that specifies the density, parking, lot dimension variances required, and all, all affordable housing specifics or, and deed restrictions that would be required for a final approval.
I, I, you know, just listening to the list, I, I have the same reaction as Joe. Just hearing that list, I'm like, oh, we're going to mess up, we're going to miss something, it's more work. So I get it, Joe. I, I, I don't even like to hear that. Just talking out loud, is there, is there a way that they could remodel these units so that they didn't have to go in and make all these moves? Can, is there some way they can get that lot line, some adjustment with the neighbor? Is there some way we don't have to make this bigger than what we're talking about here tonight?
Have you ever been in any of the cabins?
I've never been in them, no.
Oh, I have. So, and, they require an amazing amount of work, that's all I can say, to be livable. They are not now.
Is there anything that prevents?
Yeah, so the non, Clay, that, this is Jeff, but non-conforming structure language, you know, only allows them to really improve them, or alter them up to 50% of their current improvement value over a three-year period. So they can slowly piece together improvements that, you know, over a number of years. But then again, like you said, some of these are already also, they have others, other requirements, such as parking and things like that, that we would require.
Can we give variances for those issues?
And, and I think specifically, it would not be allowed also because of their adding the kitchens. Once you add those kitchens, they're not, you can't, you can't do that, in other words, and to expand that non-conformity. So you're left at best two cabins on your property.
Okay.
Why renew my motion to tentatively taking into consideration all of the issues we discussed? This is not a final approval, it's not saying we're going to say it's a good thing to do, we would like to see more information. But if the information is something that seems really reasonable, then we could possibly approve it. So is that a tentative approval? I mean, I don't see how it's locking us into anything. Is it lock, Jeff, tell me, or you tell me, is this locking us into anything?
As I understand it, it's not locking you in the same way the Nicholson issue was, where you had a tentative sub-approval coming back with the final that locks you in. This is, we think it's a good idea, we want, we think we're going to give it approval, but we want to see, you know, the items that Jeff and you have listed. And when it comes back to you at a future meeting, whether in June or whenever, you should identify those things you want to see, and you get to take a look at it and say yes or no.
Yeah.
I second.
In addition to the names, name documents you had, Jeff, development agreement, lot dimensions, deed restrictions, I'd like to see some architectural drawings from different perspectives.
Okay, yeah. I think, yes, Lisa had mentioned that as well. Okay.
And, and the permeable surface driveways, too, or parking spaces, that was a good one.
At this point, do we also want to add a written commitment to long-term?
Yeah, that's part of the deal.
Yeah.
So I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any, any further discussion?
Yes. I, I still don't understand why we're considering a motion on this, that we have no basis really to, to make. It's, it's premature. You know, the, the, what's here is not acceptable, as far as I can tell from the discussion. And, and I don't see the point of doing more than, you know, asking Jeff to have a conversation with the owners or the people who want to make this proposal work. or the people who want to make this proposal work and, and deal with some of the questions and objections that were voiced here tonight. And I just don't think there's a, I don't see the point of telling somebody that, well, we tentatively approve this if you deal with this, 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 this. Because we've, I'm sure we've forgotten something. And, and I, I just find this whole thing nebulous as can be. And I don't understand why we want to make an official, you know, whatever we're going to do.
We're asking someone to do an amazing amount of work. And then if they do all that work and they come back to us and we say, oh, no, we're not going to grant you a variance for a parking space or something like, then what? In other words, in order to go forward with this and come up with a plan, you have to have some assurance that these items, these specific things that they're asking for for variances, if all the criteria were met, might be granted. Otherwise, why would they bother making, going to all that trouble if we're going to, you know, if they come back and we say, well, no, we don't like a variance. A variance A or variance B. What we're saying is, is that if all the pieces fall together in a way that we think is a good project, then we would grant a variance for these specific things. That's all we're saying.
Okay, I think we've covered all the sides on this one.
This is being a man.
So without further ado, we have a motion and a second, can we call it?
I did. Couple of times.
Okay, let's call the rule.
Commissioner Hertz?
Yes.
Commissioner Knott?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Byrd?
No.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Chair Johnson?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone need a break? I could use some dinner.
Could I ask a question, please?
I could use a Zoom.
Would it be possible for you to amend the agenda for the Michaelis thing last and the community garden next? Because there are a group of other old ladies sitting in a greenhouse that are going to run out of daylight.
And Beth is the applicant.
I'm the applicant for Michaelis.
Yes, I know, but is Beth making a
She's making the application, she's going to make a presentation on Zoom.
Oh.
Is your website up and running at this point so that if I went home and did it from Zoom, I could do it?
You can log in, you don't have to go through the website.
No. That's on the agenda.
Is your I S P
I can't even get your website up to get the link.
It's on your agenda.
Okay, the written agenda, the hard copy. I feel like I'm just going to die in this mask for another huh? Thanks.
And Lisa, what I can do, what I can do is I'll email you just that link.
Okay, that'd be great. I'll see you in a couple minutes, I'll take your phone and go to another room.
It's acceptable to me if nobody wants to
Me too. You could take your phone into another room, take your mask off.
This is, this is a judicial hearing regarding the public hearing of consideration of C U 20-04 requested by Beth Holland on behalf of the City of Cannon Beach for conditional use allowed for a community garden. Beth Holland, application on behalf of the City of Cannon Beach for conditional use permit for development of community garden in an institutional zone at 268 Beaver Avenue, MAP Tax Lot 5102, C E 04101, 4,445, 4200, on the grounds of Cannon Beach Elementary School. The community garden is a conditional use in the zoning district and will review the desert criteria of 17.80.110 and 150. Does anyone object to the jurisdiction of the planning commission at this time? Does any commissioner believe he or she has a conflict of interest or a personal bias? Has any member had an ex parte contact or made a site visit?
Site visit.
Site visit.
Site visit.
Okay.
Any emails? Yes, first off, wanted to say that we did receive Ms. McCarthy's email. Just make sure that everyone is synchronized about that, that that's part of our research series. And so background for this, Beth Morgan, on behalf of the City of Cannon Beach is seeking to establish a community garden. She is getting into detail, the elementary school property is owned by the City of Cannon Beach and the Seaside School District. The city is in the process of purchasing the property from the school district and has entertained many ideas, concepts, and plans for the site over the years. Most recently, the city approved monumentation of the perimeter history point which commemorated Nacu's cultural legacy. Nacu's Park is approximately 1.5 acres and lies between Ecola Creek and the retired Cannon Beach Elementary School facility. The park contains passive and active recreation, space, some Nacu's monumentation, and a trail that connects to the large Cannon Beach Trail Network. The site can be accessed off of First Street and Beaver Avenue by pedestrians with parking along Beaver and vehicular access off of North Lodge. The proposed site of the 30 by 80 community garden, which contains individual four by 10-foot block plots, is proposed to be on the southeastern portion of the property set back from the First Street core work. The community garden is proposed to share the site and field with the current users, which include the food pantry, local chapter of alcohol phenomenal, and youth soccer club. The garden will be enclosed in a seven-foot high-protected scent structure to withstand the local L curve preservation. The community garden would contain raised beds intended to be cultural constraints to the site. Most of the known archaeological sites, the old elementary school grounds, are around the mouth of Ecola Creek, especially on the South Bank. The site is the location of the Native American Village, formerly visited by the Lewis and Clark Expedition during the winter of 1805, 1806. State Historic Preservation Office is often involved in these matters. Federally recognized tribes, purposes of archaeological cultural artifacts, is a competitive tribe, the Sylite Indians. The Clats, Nahalem tribe, and the Chinook tribe are more local, but not federally recognized. The city has delved into the community garden in the past with various locations investigated throughout the community from Nacu's Park to Mo's. In 2015, there was a discussion about placing community garden in the traffic loop that comes on Highway 101 in Nacu's Park. But the conversation was delayed due to the ongoing work with the Parks and Trails Master Plan. The community gardens are found in many of the surrounding县县的 communities have been a growing trend nationally for a number of years. The recent pandemic has brought some renewed interest to food security issues, including developing local food sources when supply chains have become compromised. Both Seaside and Nahalem have thriving community gardens and have been in operation for a number of years. There are many models for which to govern and run such operations from city lag to local land trust and other nonprofit models. The city approached the city council at its meeting of May, this past May, where they approached, where they proposed tentative plans and received council direction. The council gave approval to proceed as partner with direction to develop a lease or security agreement with appropriate parties so that there is clear governance, maintenance, and management structure and all legal agreements are in place before construction. And so as far as the conditional use criteria, A, the applicant states that the pandemic is the impetus for the Cannon Beach community garden. The current short food security issues brought on by previous wars and the resilience communities found in such endeavors. Pandemic has altered many aspects of life and food insecurity has increased across the nation as evidenced by an increase in local food demand on our local food bank. Community gardens are conditional use in all Cannon Beach zoning districts and thus any location where the garden might be proposed would require conditional use. The applicants have stated support of the tribe, food pantry, Cannon Beach Community Church, and Cannon Beach Garden Club. Yet as of this writing, staff report, there has been no letters of support received. The city council at its recent work session expressed concern over many aspects of the proposed plan. Emphasized the community garden committee would need to work out an agreement to protect the operations and management of the facility and supply evidence in a form of lease agreement or other mechanism where there is some legal assurance against damages. Where, whatever this means, this committee is part of the city's own boards and committees and works through one of its departments or works independently of the 501(c)(3) or some other solution, council expects a secured priority in the construction. Since the council meeting, Sunset Empire Parks and Recreation District has offered a letter of support expressing their interest to serve as the 501(c)(3) partner and provide any extra coverage that might be required for insurance purposes, while the Cannon Beach Community Garden Committee becomes a zone 501(c)(3) or legal entity. On B, item B, with no structures except for the fencing and raised beds, the facilities will likely have little impact on public facilities. However, without any management agreement or any concept of how the community garden will operate or maintain, including who's under whose management, there is very little way to know the impact of the operation of public facilities and services. And then on item C, the site will be presumably accessed from the north entrance via North Spruce, which would, should serve as its loading and unloading access point. There is limited parking off of Beaver and yet no parking requirements on the Cannon Beach municipal culture issue. The location of the garden appears to fall south of the active recreation field currently being utilized by youth soccer club. This should be confirmed prior to or as a condition to approval. The committee proposes to use the school site as a storage facility and such agreements would need to be in evidence to or as a condition prior to approval, as would any utilities and water usage. D, the raised bed should not comprise the integrity of the cultural artifacts. The approval of the tribe and the state historic preservation office should be in evidence prior to a condition of approval. E, as mentioned above, there is adequate access from North Spruce. If only the food bank and the soccer are utilizing facilities and grounds, there appears to be conflict with other uses, doesn't appear. The clear delineation between the soccer field and garden will be required. Any onsite storage of soils, compost, or other material must be strictly limited as this is one of the main entries in the Cannon Beach. The fact is exemption from design review under 1781.55h places a larger burden on any maintenance or management agreement that should be a condition of the approval. And then I go on to say for F, the site is generally surrounded by other civic and commercial uses. Yet as an entry point of Cannon Beach, it holds a special place in the art of Cannon Beach. This historically and culturally significant site in the Cannon Beach Parks and Trails Master Plan adopted in 2017 classifieds in Nacu's Park along with Main, City, and less surely its community park. The master plan, which ranked Nacu's Park as highest priority, included recommendations for the park to include a range of possible passive recreation similar to less surely to the more structured recreational opportunities, while being designed to respect the native heritage of the site. Master plan also contemplates that other ideas for redeveloping space include community gardens. This is time we will mention introduce community gardens in Cannon Beach in a very accessible location for such a garden. As was mentioned in the background section, Cannon Beach has contemplated to use the garden over the years and think that it generally considers Nacu's as a central location for such a garden. The Parks and Trails Master Plan states, while the specifics of future improvements to Nacu's Park are still to be determined, a number of features are likely to emerge. The first is connectivity. While the site occupies a key location and hand linkages to the beach and to the existing trail network would better mesh together Cannon Beach recreational open spaces. The site also presents opportunities for ecological restoration, native vegetation, and shoreline reconstruction. Along the Ecola Creek shoreline could help restore habitat in the Salmon Bearing Stream improvement. To these parks can also help preserve the site's cultural and historical heritage. Possible means for acknowledging and celebrating Native American heritage include signage, culture, significant vegetation, and public art. Additionally, local residents' fond memories of the old elementary school should also be considered in redeveloping the site. The school's recreational facilities present many opportunities for new uses that continue to serve the public. Many community members suggested repurposing the building to a venue for public events such as fairs, festivals, swap meet, concerts, beer garden, et cetera. Other ideas for redeveloping the space including community gardens, the kayak launch, informal or passive recreation and active recreation such as mini disc golf. If the fencing and management plan are to the PC's approval and tribal representatives and state historical officials are fine with the location, there should be very little concern about cause by design and is likely why any community garden exempt from the G R D review. I give you a couple comprehensive plan sections that are applicable. At the planning commission actions, I list its conditions of approval. Like I said, that lease agreement and any kind of management agreement and operations agreement vital. For instance, if Parks is going to take over any of this, that needs to be outlined, water, utilities, and things like that. Letter of support from the state office and the tribe, letters of agreement from the youth soccer club that they have enough filled. And then the other, any other items that might come up in part of your discussion. Like I said, in my staff comments, this seems to be considered many times throughout the history of Cannon Beach. The council showed concern, again last night, for these same items. And whether this is the right moment for this has all been fleshed out. And of course, they decided to go forward with this and I'll let Beth tell you the reasons why they're moving forward with that. Lisa didn't make it, yay, and so I'm going to unmute her and she can let us know. Can you hear us, Lisa?
Yes.
Okay, and now let me find Beth. Did she drop off or, oh, no, there's Beth, I bet, okay.
Hello?
Beth?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead and state your name and mailing address.
Beth Holland, P O Box 132, Cannon Beach, Oregon.
Okay.
Can I hear you? Yeah. I can't.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, good, thank you. So I think as we've moved along throughout the day, we have received assurances from the Sunset Park and Rec Department that they will have a letter for us agreeing to the lease agreement and some of the other things that were brought up. I know I can respond to any questions you have probably better than, than just, I know that there were issues about the Madison Street proposal and we just felt that as we were moving ahead, hopefully so in this one direction, that would provide parking and would be a public park in the future and wouldn't just be part of a two-year agreement. You know, that this could have some, and also because of the location with the food bank and the gym, which, and with the Native Americans, who we are very happy to be collaborating with and looking forward to learning about their cultural it something that really serves the community and we feel this will be a step in that And we do feel, Mary Blake is here with us tonight and she's, she's of the mind after working on so many community gardens in the area that, that people generally tend to walk to the garden. And we have seen several people walking by just while we were there talking it over that were in the neighborhood that were very happy to see this coming. And not always, yeah, we can certainly separate the numbers of people who come and we're, I think we'll be able to address, you know, and I think as far as management goes for this first year, we'll put it in our budget to have somebody who will be helping manage and, you know, educational component will be big here and so we'll be wanting to, you know, add, add that to this effort.
My, my, my big concern is that we're jumping the gun on this. The city is in the process of buying the property, but it hasn't been bought and I think it's unfair to proceed with the community garden that would take precedence over other things that are in the master plan, especially the master plan that hasn't been totally approved. And since we have an option to start a community garden on Madison Street, we have individuals that have an open lot that have already suggested would allow us to use that, I think would be a more prudent way to proceed because we'd have a much better idea how many people are actually interested in community gardens and, and we, we can try that out for this, for this year and see how much interest there really is in the community. And I, and I, here again, I feel like, I feel like we're pushing the, the limits prematurely over what the tribes may want to develop that property into and I don't think there's been nearly enough public input on how that site is actually going to be developed. So I'm, I'm opposed to starting that garden in that site. The other thing that worries me is that in order to have a fence around the garden to keep the elk out, you're going to have to dig down into the soil and that's an archaeological site that you would be disturbing. So I, I'm, I'm against starting that this year until the property is secure and proceed with developing community garden on the Madison lot that the people want us to, to use.
May I ask a question of the applicant?
Yes.
Well, I guess one, one, one thing that came to mind, I'm just looking down at the actual staff report, a request by Beth Holland on behalf of the city of Cannon Beach, is there a, is there some sort of an agreement between the city of Cannon Beach and what you're proposing?
We are working on the lease agreement currently and also with the city attorney and with Bruce. So as far as, as the location of this, this particular site, you know, we vetted it because it was the least archaeologically sensitive area. It's also not where the elk are traditionally bedding down. It doesn't interfere with the soccer field as we line up with the asphalt paving. This is a recommended use for this site. It is close to a facility that would be very helpful in educating people about with the gym right there and the, and the kitchen. You know, we could really go ahead and develop a, sort of a, a whole system of gardening, eating, food to table sort of environment. Also, we feel that because of all those people in the bread line, in the food lines, you know, where our hearts are going out to them and we want them to have this resource and this, this knowledge available to them. We also have funding at this point that is not interested in Madison Street because of the parking situation and the longevity. You know, this is going to cost money and our donors are not really interested in a two-year option and it's also something that could be problematic for Madison Street neighbors. Obviously, you know, the parking could be, we're here, we don't have that issue. And Mary Blake would like to say just a few words.
Yes, hi, I'm Mary Blake, 1668 Whispering Pine, Seaside, Oregon. I was the general manager for the Sunset Empire Park and Recreation District for 28 years and one of the projects that I'm most proud of was the development of community gardens in 2006. Cannon Beach was a big part of that. However, we weren't able to find a spot that was suitable for having one. We went ahead with six community gardens throughout the county, two in Seaside, one in Warrenton, one in Hammond, one in Astoria associated with the church, and one that was tied in with Emerald Heights. Anytime that you see the community garden shift away from additional opportunities and benefits, they sometimes don't, you know, grow as well. So when I heard and was invited to come visit with the folks of Cannon Beach, I knew that the excitement was here because there was so much enthusiasm at the beginning in 2006. And this is a site that is absolutely what really I think any community would embrace and want. It introduces people as you come into your beautiful city to activities that will invite them to grow. It's on a sidewalk, they can see the activities, it's integrated with the landscaping around. It has all the advantages of engaging people for continuing education, not only of our food source, but how to prepare it and also how to share it. It can be a learning tool for kids, but also for families to stretch budgets, also for the tourism department to be able to, or folks with restaurants and using the site. You don't necessarily want to try to put it back in an area that you really can't see and engage people. Also, in my gardening experiences, we've never really had large groups at a gardening site at once. Actually, people come in, they do their work, and also during this particular time, it is one of the activities that was not shut down to the COVID-19. So our gardens, both in Seaside as well as the other ones, Warrenton and the other smaller ones, have continued to invite people out during this time, still be connected with community and still be connected with something even deeper, and that's getting into our rich soil, growing things, watching, knowing that there is hope and things that we can pull together. And so I, I don't know about, I, I know about your community, actually. I came here in 1984 and over my almost 40 years here, we exhibit such a connection and believe me, this, this community garden with the people that I've had the privilege of sitting down with and working with, as well as working with the foundation and also Skylar with the Park and Recreation District. These things are in place, they are there to reach out and support communities to do this because this is literally what we're, we're really needing right now. So I think it's a beautiful location. I think that it will be something that you can be proud of and I think that it'll be the beginning of other really things that will grow from it, not just your beautiful garden.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
I have spent many hours sitting through meetings talking about community gardens. I hope nobody misunderstands that I am, I totally would love to have a community garden. I just think it's being rushed. For example, I'm a member of the Parks Committee, we haven't even discussed, had a meeting to discuss it and it's definitely part of a park. And so I, I just, I just think we're moving way too fast and I would love to have a garden this year, but I just, I don't think it's possible.
I mean, when I lived in Portland, I had four different community gardens and if you don't have a manager there to look after the property and get after the gardeners to keep things viable and, and clean, that can be an eyesore for some people. Certainly, certainly this would be the first thing that you would see when you come into Cannon Beach and, and so I, I do think that we're rushing this process. I do not want to see development on property until it's properly owned by the city. And the other thing that concerns me is when I had the community gardens in Portland, there was always a work shit because people do not like to bring in tools, you know, if they're on a bike or if they're walking. So I feel like there should be a structure there that would accommodate the needs of gardeners. So I'm, I'm just opposed to rushing into this and I still think we have an opportunity to use the Madison lot. As you said, there are usually not that many people at the community gardens. When I had my community garden up in Seaside, there definitely were only one or two people at one given time. So I don't see like that would be a hindrance if you were to develop the Madison property and since those people are willing to give that lot over, I think that would be a much better start to how that will fit in. And once again, I still feel like by putting down this garden, we're setting a precedent on what other things would be developed in that park and what's going to happen with the, with the building. So I'm against starting this so soon.
Can I interject something? I'm sorry, this is Amber Fowler and I'm on this community garden committee with Beth Holland, Mary Blake, and Kathy Filgas, we're all listening in here and I want to address some of the things that you just said. First and foremost, the notion of this community garden is in response to this COVID-19 pandemic. We've had a lot of separation and isolation from each other and from, just in general in the community, there's been a lot of separation. This was a response to a lack of connection to each other and to the land as a way of healing and helping each other by growing a sustainable food source during this timing. So this is emergent. This is not something that you would do in normal times. This is not something that you would go through ordinary processes. We're asking for people to understand this unusual timing, which I think the city of Cannon Beach is very aware of. They've had to do so much flexing in all different ways to accommodate these changing of times. The other point is that about Madison and about this other property, the donors that we have lined up, this is not a cost for the city. This is a team of people who are coming together donating their time, donating their expertise, donating their materials, donating their networks to make this happen for the community of Cannon Beach. It's already something that's been in the master plan that is sitting in the same plot that was just coincidence. So I think that it's really a function of understanding that this is a way to bring us together in a way that's very low footprint for the city. We've already been talking with the school district to get access. We're in discussion and have already gotten support from the indigenous tribes. We're in discussion with Sunset Empire Parks and we'll have a letter of agreement for an MOU and a lease. We have already figured out the liability issues. Everything that's been put in front of us from the city of Cannon Beach in terms of the hurdles, we have addressed and we have a solution for. We are not asking for anything except for temporary use of this space to start a community garden during this COVID time. It is extremely urgent. I hope that addressed what you were suggesting. I'm not sure who was speaking, so I can't name, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'd just like to say too that there are storage facilities there at the back of the gym, whether they'd be available to us or not, there's, there's certainly a lot of storage right along that side. And I, I would, I would think that we could handle this in a way that would beautify the entrance, Darrell. I really don't see it as being a blight on the, the environment there. I'm pretty sure that we can make it very, very, you know, becoming. So it'll, it'll be an enhancement to that entrance. And again, it's portable. You know, we're putting down, you know, maybe 100 yards of soil in a very, in with wireframe enclosures, probably raised beds, everything's up above the ground. We're working on elk fence that will not penetrate the ground, something that we can use with guy wires.
Well, what I want to mention to you, here at our meeting right now, we're all wearing masks. I'm not so sure that you're going to have people wanting to go down and garden with this epidemic that we're dealing with. And, and the other thing, it's not costing us anything to develop the lot on Madison. And also when I and others tried to start community gardens five years ago, there were a number of people that I talked to that said they did not want to see a community garden. So we need to have more input from the community and we need to have a secure deed on the property. I just feel like you're rushing this and you have not had enough community input.
Can I ask a couple of questions of the applicant?
Sure.
Can you describe for me the fencing material that you're proposing to use and how it will be installed?
Beth? Just one second, they switched on us here.
Sorry, Beth's side and so we didn't have her iPad, so we missed what you guys just said, we apologize.
Sure, I'll repeat. I have a couple of questions. The first is, can you describe the fencing material you're going to use and you're proposing to use and how that will be installed into the ground?
What we're looking at right now and would be some kind of metal post with, you know, guy wires, something Dick Bash mentioned that would be a good idea, you know, to just, there's several ways that I think we're going to be able to do this. Triangulating guy wires and we're, we're looking at a four by four black mesh.
Fence.
Fence, fence is what we're, what we feel would be the least visible and, and structurally good for the, so we're, we're really looking at all metal structure and something above ground easily be moved from that particular spot if that's not a good place, you know, over time.
So, next question, would you pound those stakes in or would you dig them in?
No, they would be sitting above the ground, so it would basically be functioning on a bracket that would just be sitting above ground that they would fit into, the panels would fit into above ground.
So there would be no digging related to this project? Okay, I think I read your lips there. Next question, you mentioned these are extraordinary times and I understand that, I think you've heard tonight a couple of concerns, which I also voice, and that is due process with something that we don't yet own, but in foreseeable future, the near future it looks like we will. Maybe extraordinary measures on your part would make this more palatable to overcome some of those concerns, such that, such as you agreed to take the garden down this fall?
What would, what would be the reasoning for taking down the garden this fall? Because the idea is to have continuity so that people actually know that they can sustain food over a 12-month cycle. Like that's the beauty of a garden is that it keeps giving.
Well, make no mistake about it, I really like the idea of a garden, but I've also sat on this panel enough to know that we need due process and there are other groups interested in this site to, whether they want your space or the space you're proposing, I don't know. But there are some real concerns that we have to face as a body in terms of fairness to the community. So one way to do that would be to go, we have extraordinary times, this doesn't make any logical sense, other than it protects a due process for this site, which, which is probably going to be a pretty big thing.
So I would like to say that we were, that we're totally on board with going back to Parks and
Like that's the beauty of a garden is that it keeps giving.
Well, make no mistake about it, I really like the idea of a garden. But I've also sat on this panel enough to know that we need due process and there are other groups interested in this site to, whether they want your space or the space you're proposing, I don't know. But there are some real concerns that we have to face as this body in terms of fairness to the community. So one way to do that would be to go, we have extraordinary times. This doesn't make any logical sense other than it protects a due process for this site, which, which is probably going to be a pretty big thing.
So I would like to say that we were, that we're totally on board with going back to Parks and Community Services as soon as, you know, we can get back on their schedule and to work this program up through that system, through the city. We're not, we're just, we started this because we all are available right now. That's sort of not normal. I mean, we are all on board for this and we've been able to collaborate energies together and that's, that's not normal. Most of us would be off doing something else right now. So I think it's the timing that you're going to benefit from all of our efforts. And it's not going to, thing that needs to be, not right for any reason, we'll move it. And we will work through the process, we'll start again and, and hopefully grow this, this opportunity to develop a community's garden system that will cover the, in time.
Okay, are there any other questions for the applicant? Okay, if that's not the case, we will close the.
Proponents?
Oh yeah, okay. Any proponents for the?
Mike Morgan, G L O one thirty-two. The Madison Street site is at the generous offer on the part of the owners. But Darrell, you've moved dirt before, I know you've moved a lot of dirt. And to bring in 100 yards of soil from McEwen's, build boxes and, and have two years to use it and then have to haul it all away someplace else is, is preposterous. I mean, they're saying that they want to build their house in, in a, in a couple of years. And I have no doubt that they're going to do that. So how, how in the world can, can you expect Madison to actually be a decent site? It's, it's also on a street that has minimal parking. It's deluged with, with people, tourists trying to park there during the summertime. The residents, you know, if we had to go back through the planning commission and, and notify all the residents, they all come unglued. So, you know, I think, I think you really have to eliminate that as an option. The other, the other point is until, until about four years ago, our, the, that site that we're talking about was occupied by two very ugly portable classrooms.
I, I know that.
Which were hauled away and, and made the, interestingly, made the food bank or the pantry in, in Seaside. So, you know, I think the site is, is bordered by the territories. It's, it's a, it's a good site for, for the thing because it's, it's not, it's not, it's out of the way of all the other activity. So I, I really think that, you know, the folks that have been involved, and I have been involved, have, have really put a lot of effort into it. I apologize for not coming to Parks and Community Services initially. But, you know, things have been rolling along. The tribe, Dick and Roberta Bash are, are very enthusiastic about this. They were on site with Beth and Amber and, and they were just very, very happy that this was going to happen. And they, they want to, they want to use native plants, they want to introduce native plants, not only around the garden, but on the riparian zone of, of the, of the creek, which now is a bramble of, of, you know, invasives. So there are, there are a lot of really beneficial things that can come from this. If, if you, you know, if you don't think it's going to happen this year, if you think it's going to rush, you know, the, the conditional, you could approve the conditional use. If it doesn't happen this year, it could start, it could start next year. But they've gotten all the, all the pieces in place. The Sunset Parks and Rec, the, the, the school district is, is willing to use, to, to give that little portion that belongs to them for about another month to the, to the effort. Water is, is available in, from the gym. I mean, I just think it would be a completely, a complete win-win situation. And you of all people have been such an advocate for, for beauty and gardening and, and the community garden. And I was involved with you looking for a site about 10 years ago, so.
Five years ago.
Five years ago.
That was more than five.
Five or 10 years. But, you know, I, I really think, I, I think that you should keep an open mind about this. There's a lot, the, the women, the people that have been, been involved in this are all very capable. We have a donor who's, who's willing to put a sizable amount of money down. The city will have absolutely no cost in, in construction or maintenance of this. They do have a budget item for a, a summer intern, either a student or a person that needs a, a part-time job to manage the place. And I, you know, I think they've ticked all the boxes. So I'm, I'm just, I'm kind of amazed that, that you're so completely negative about this.
Can I respond?
Yes.
Okay. When I was living in Portland, Leslie Cole started a platter number of gardens that were on vacant lots. And we knew that when they were on vacant lots, that they, they would be turned over at some point and, and the owners would take them back. So it's not uncommon to use lots like that. And the other thing is, when I had my site in Seaside for five years. Can I finish? So what I wanted to say was, one year, I think this is the third year into, into being a gardener up there, the city brought in compost, and I'm not sure if it was from McEwen's, but they brought in compost that was not sterile. And we ended up having scab and also we ended up having all kinds of weeds that, that came into the place. So I'm not sure that you, that you are getting free, good free soil for a garden because it's, once you bring in these, these seeds like that, it's, it's a constant gardening effort. So I'm just sticking to the, I, I'm not against a community garden. I obviously tried to work for that, but I think you're rushing it and I think you're imposing this will onto the other people that have an interest in that site.
Is there another interest that's at this current time competing with that space, with that exact footprint? Because that is, that is, this is the first time that that's been brought up to us in all of the meetings and all of the conversations we've had.
I, I didn't hear, what was the first part of the question?
I think as far as the soil is concerned, you can trust that I'm good on soil. I've spent a long time vetting soil for multiple projects and I, and I know I can do this. The soil's not free, we're buying it. We have resources available to us through the generosity of people in the community. So that's the other thing you have to take advantage of right now. The generosity of so many good well wishers for this to go forward. The site on Madison, the appeal to our, because of the, the short-term availability and also because the excitement of dealing with the Indian tribe and being part of a community of something that the city will own, obviously, and be able to go forward.
Is there really somebody else?
I don't know if we've asked for any opponent.
Oh yeah. So yeah, are there any opponents, any proponents? Okay. Is there any other staff response?
I would just say that the city council has asked for it to come back before them. So there is another step of approval that will be required on this. But as I say in the staff report, you know, there's a number of conditions that I listed if this were to go for approval. Quite a few that I would expect that you would want to see as a condition. And so there's, you know, there's a couple of ways to go on without that. You can, you can, you know, in the meeting, you can ask for materials or you can ask for it as a conditional approval. The city council, I answer those kinds of questions.
There was a question that never got answered by one of the proponents for this project about whether anyone else had put in a request to use the space. And she never, her question never got answered.
Thank you.
I don't know of that, Lisa, I, I don't have anything and I don't know of Park from Parks. I don't know of anything that, I do know that, like I said in the staff report, that there have been many groups that have come forward with interest and plans for that park. But I don't know of any other use of that space. It was brought up at the city council about making sure that they stay outside of the soccer concerns and to get that straightened out. But I don't know of any other use of that area.
Without, without the city owning it though, it doesn't seem abnormal to me that there wouldn't be other applicants. I mean, the city doesn't own this site right now, so why would people apply to?
Very, very true and, excuse me.
Well, that's what I was trying to find out. How can you do something on a site that's not owned by the city? How can the city okay it?
We can okay it if, like you said, it's conditioned upon these agreements. We will not allow it to go through, the city council has asked for it to come back before them with those agreements in place. And so, you know, the city is kind of partner. I believe that the location of the actual community gardens, I believe, is on the city property. Whereas the facilities that are asking for water and chores and any of that, that's on the school side. But either way, that agreement is in process of being more calculated between the city council and this group.
Okay, does the applicant wish to add any additional statement?
No, I think, I think you've got our best. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Okay, then we're closing the, closing the public hearing. Okay, I think we've covered this fairly well.
I move to deny the conditional use permit for the community garden.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, call the robe.
Mr. Knott?
Yes.
Mr. Newton?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Burden?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Oh.
Mr. Kerr?
No.
Karen Johnson?
Yes. So what, I, I, what's the, what's the, three S? Four T's?
Four T's.
It's four T's.
Four T's, to deny it?
To deny.
Okay. Okay. And you see? Okay, this is a quasi judicial hearing regarding the public hearing. O three, request by Mike Morgan for the conditional use permit for the shoreline protection structure. Mike Morgan asked for the conditional use permit to construct the shoreline protection structure. The property is located at 35 Mystic Street, map tax law five one oh three one eight oh two two zero zero and is in residential moderate density zone. Property is owned by F four investment LLC. The request will be reviewed in the municipal code section seventeen eight oh dot two two oh shoreline stabilization. Does anyone object to the planning commission to hear this matter at this time? Does any commissioner believe he or she has a conflict of interest or a personal bias? Has any member had an expert contact or made a site visit?
Site visit?
Okay, is there a staff report?
Yes. Vegetated shoreline, certain way you make specific runs along the western part of the boundary as shown in the area. Since at least 1957, the bank of the shoreline has been protected by a wooden concrete wall running along the property line. Remaining concrete steps leading to the original home's rear entry. I can view municipal code seventeen eighty two thirty seven. Big though, beachfront protection structures are almost ten minutes square. It's all been visited prior to nineteen seventy-seven. There has been, has clearly been developed since at least nineteen forty-six, as can be verified by the classic county assessor's record. C D M C also requires any shoreline stabilization structures to be coordinated and permitted through the Oregon State Parks and Rec District. Jason Wall from the district was contacted by the applicant, the Met Staff on site to discuss the project and permitting process. O P R D has also received the materials for the appropriate permitting, which is currently in progress. The property is approximately 114 feet of Tolvana Park in southern Cannon Beach, encompassing 0.24 acres. The beach in this part of the Florida, about four foot deep and resting on mudstone bedrock. There is evidence of the seasonal erosion effect as the bluff is vertically exposed and the current stairs are undermined by the erosion effects. The applicant states that the lower four feet of the bluff face is composed of white, golden brown, decomposed sandstones, some of that of Angora Peak Sandstone of the Miocene story of formation. According to NIM and NIM, it is likely that these materials were obtained from the vicinity of Hug Point and transported to Tolvana Park by trucks using the route to the highway in nineteen forty-six to your construction. The applicant has provided geo-hazard reports stating that eight-foot-tall bluff appears to have been armored with local soils at least since nineteen fifty-seven, resulting in an apparent shoreline retreat rate of zero based on aerial photos from fifty-seven to twenty sixteen. There appears to have been little change in the position of the road and bluff face over the last past 50 years. This is best explained by the inference of unrecognized past field activity. The applicant goes on to state, at this rate and assuming no changes in the rate of erosion, it will take around 60 to 100 years for bluff to retrieve 15 feet, three squirts towards the house across about one-half of the width of the western yard. The applicant has stated that storm of the shore with riprap property at this time is not justifiable as the rate of retreat is minor and not the prioritized option, leaving various suggested solutions. The current application proposes a juke fabric wrap burrito structural system where two-foot thick, 114-foot-long burritos would be built on the beach but within the property line, filling the void created by the erosion of the bank. The burritos would be 15 feet high and put in an area excavated beneath below the distant beach. From the edges along, they would extend 14 feet west, four foot east of the property line, filled with clay soil mixture and planted with beach grass when two feet have been flooded sand. The plantings would be a mixture of native American and European beach grasses and other native species such as our beach grass. The Tolvana area contains a mixture of hard surfaces from sea walls to riprap and soft approaches such as vegetated banks and natural bluff. The conditional use criteria A demands exists for this project. Their earlier warning structure and concrete stairs have been undermined and state parks debate that they do not approve a riprap or seawall solution to the erosion problem. An earlier discussion with state parks and representatives considered a multi-property solution that might span a number of properties, but the solution brought before the city is only for the current subject property. The type of erosion control solutions range from examining Tolvana Park where to the north and south there exist stretches of unimproved portions to riprap seawall portions, all within a couple of blocks of the subject property. The burrito solution has been shown to be effective in various locations where lower energy systems don't threaten the establishment of the vegetative material to work with the structural system. Such a system would likely be an effective means for control, storm surge, while not armoring the bank. B, outside of the construction window, there is no evidence that this will have any affecting traffic patterns, public service or facilities. Applications provided to the various agencies and other than the jurisdictional determination letter. Applications provided to the various agencies and other than the jurisdiction determination letter, nothing, or J correspondence, nothing to raise any concern. C, no impacts on facilities. D, warning's report provides evidence that seasonal surges threaten the property and the vegetated burrito barriers are projected solution for these impacts. Warning provides projections of possible increased seasonal erosion due to climate change, which may have long range impacts to the property. Warning offers a range of solutions with the least impactful being to gracefully surrender the edge of the lawn by installing steps and boots that are designed to pull back through times as bluff edge retreat. The applicant's proposal shows the existing steps and pathways to house and stains additional steps leading western stairway. E, project has mental impact with transportation emergency. F, project once completed should be compatible with vegetated embankment, embankments and wall structures to the north and south. Then as far as the conditional uses for shoreline stabilization, staff would say that the property, the planning commission has received the warning report on the erosion hazard. Warning states that the barren lower slope, tipping steps to the beach and exposure of plank retaining wall all indicate that there has been past armoring of the bluff with rocky clay silt soil following the course of nineteen seventy. Comparison of bluff position on tax lot twenty one hundred to the south, which appears not to have been armored, suggests that perhaps four to six feet of bluff retreat has occurred over fifty years or around one to one point five inches per year or around one to one and a half feet per decade. Warning then proceeds to give projections of the rate of retreat, which is vital to prioritization of protection types and critical need. The western property line of tax twenty two hundred lies approximately eight to ten feet east of the eroding bluff face. According to professional surveys by CKI, the eight foot tall bluff appears to have been armored with local soils at least once since nineteen fifty seven, resulting in apparent shoreline retreat rate of zero. Based on aerial photos from fifty seven twenty six, there appears to have been little change in the position of the road in bluff face over the past fifty years. This is best explained by the inference of the unrecognized past fill activity. Using shoreline positions, the rate of bluff is calculated to bend one to one feet point five per decade. Given that the western lawn is thirty feet wide, it would take a hundred fifty to a hundred years for the bluff to retreat through fifteen feet of the house. Assuming that the contributing factors of shoreline erosion, storminess, sea level rise do not change appreciably in the future, this is about one half of the thirty foot estimated retreats in the next sixty years of Whittier and others, who assume increasing levels of climate change. This implies a hypothetical potential with beta retreat of five feet per decade, which is much higher than has been observed today. Armoring the face of the bluff with silty soil, geotextile, burritos and hooker willow or European beach grass so that the fill extends to about the property line should provide adequate protection for the present bluff edge for the next one to three decades using local calculated rates of bluff retreat. A retreat rate of five feet per decade might justify eventually armoring the shoreline with riprap if the burrito solution fails. It may be necessary to monitor the repair if the sand and beach grass solution is chosen, as maybe next to eventually plant willow and the burritos. Warning states that if the burrito solution fails, the retreat of five feet per decade might justify armoring shoreline. In other words, erosion is never to be considered these harder options. Let's see. The structures proposed to be constructed at a one to one slope in order to stay within property boundaries and minimize impact on the beach. It will conform with the lines of the riprap to the north and the other properties to the south. F can provide evidence that the state's OPRD sees concerns by a softer approach in riprap. The proposal represents a vegetated structural system that can absorb the low energy while establishing, establishing a vegetated aesthetic. Let's see, anything else? I think that's pretty much it. The conference of plan, talk about shoreline in many, but those are included pretty much within the criteria. I said in the draft recommendations and planning commission action that if this is approved, we would accept monitoring support and building checks for a limited period of five years and the structure would be time for the auction. Any questions?
Uh, yeah, so on page five, it says the oceanfront setback line is such that the western portion of the building must be about thirty feet in the top of the facility of the ranch and lots of the large. So, what happens with the south side? Is that, should that be thirty, thirty feet back?
You mean, well, the, the south side faces the, but not faces the big territories?
Well, no, I was just wondering, the, the way the building plan is set right now, it, are, are you just allowing a fifteen foot setback to the, no?
No, this doesn't have anything to do with the setback.
Okay. Any questions for Jeff?
Jeff, I did have a question. What is, what is off season to you? When you say one of the two conditions that just is, is construction during off season, what, or planting during off season, what is that?
Well, you know, after September, I think generally October remembers the window they, they like to do.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jeff? Okay, criteria to be considered noted in the staff report listed on the criteria sheet next to the west door. Testimony on this must be directed toward that criteria or other criteria in compliance with the plan which the person testifying believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue of company by a statement or evidence sufficient to afford the, this decision makers and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal based on that issue. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional testimony, argument and evidence regarding the application. Planning commission still grant such a request by continuing the public hearing and leaving the record open for additional written testimony, arguments and evidence. Yes, there are presentation by the applicant.
Mike Morgan, deal lot one thirty two. I won't belabor this, but basically the state parks department said to apply for a, a riprap permit. There was a seawall there, the wooden, the wooden structure, it's fallen apart, but it's unlikely that we would grant you a riprap thing. So that's why the owner is, is asking for the burrito approach, which has been used successfully on several places along the, in, along the beach. One, two in front of East Deck Rock and one actually just south of the, just south of this site, between the site and Tolavona Waysite. And those were done back in ninety five and the, and they really held up quite well. They were, they were planted in, in willows. But in, in this, this situation, the owner, because of recent provisions of the code, the owner would prefer to use beach grass and, and other native, and other herbaceous plants. So that's, that's kind of it. It, there, it'll look essentially like a dune once, once the sand, they need to import sand and cover the, the burritos with the, with sand and then plant it with, with the beach grass. And they won't be able to plant it until the rains come. That'll be, that'll be November probably. It's, it, it sounds like the, there hasn't been much beach erosion, but if you, if you read Tom's report, he, he does say that the, there has been soil dropped dumped over the side and that's the probable reason why, why the two aerial photos look like there hasn't been any erosion. But according to the, the other geologists, the idea, you know, the, the, the threat of, of climate change and sea level rise makes this significantly more, more important. So I'd be glad to answer any questions.
So I'm, I'm a little baffled by the burritos here on page three on the information sheet. It has the, the burritos, burritos would be fifteen feet high, including an area excavated below the existing beach from the edge of the lawn that would extend fourteen feet west, four feet east of the property line.
Are you looking at the drawing?
No, no, I'm looking at page three, the informational. So I'm, I'm baffled by that. How much of that space will, I mean, how did they get the fifteen foot, I think?
Well, I think they're starting, I'm looking for the drawing, but they're starting below, below grade. So they're, they're starting, you know, they're digging down two feet and, and putting the first burrito there.
And Mike, I was, I was, I was looking at page eight of the document. Come on, two, that's what that one refers to. That's the grid at A three.
The fourth of the.
A four, excuse me. A three and A four both show. Burrito. And the, like, Michael, the thing about four feet of it is underneath the grounds for.
The first, the first burrito and half a burrito are, are under the existing stand level. And then they, then they go up one, two, three, four, I think.
So, so the, the burritos would be at lawn level? They wouldn't be?
They would be what?
At lawn level?
They would, yeah, they would come up to, to the existing lawn, meet the lawn.
Okay. And then, and there was two different places where you talk about the, the willow being used, but also there's other places here that talk about using beach grass and native plants. So what's the, what's the vegetation?
The, the, the willows will grow to as much as twenty six feet.
Yeah.
And they, with, with the recent dune management restrictions on trimming vegetation, as I understand it, they, they would not be allowed to, to, to keep the, to keep the willows trimmed at the, at the, you know, fifteen foot level to, to, to keep their view.
But, but you're not planning on using any, any other material other than the willows?
No, we're, we're not going to use willows. We're going to use, we're, we're proposing beach grass. The drawing, the drawing shows beach grass. I mean, willows, in my opinion, willows work better. But, but since you, you eliminated the option of, of trimming vegetation, then, in, in my understanding.
I haven't clarified that under a conditional use permit is a, a structural system. You're allowed to put that as one of the conditions, that they allow to trim the willow or, or grass. It's a special provision I, I can get you the citation on how it is in the oceanfront section.
I have, can I ask a question?
Yes.
How far out towards the ocean, how much farther out will this extend than the neighbor to the south and to the north?
The, the neighbor to the south has the same problem as the, as the, the Michaelas. And I think they, they've tried to work with them and see if they would be willing to, to go along and do the thing at the same time, but just to save costs, but it will, it will not go out any further than the, than the riprap wall that's on the north.
Okay, so it's not any further in towards the, it's not taking away any more beach than is already taken away by the neighbor to the north?
No, and, and actually, it, they, they're, they're staying four feet in from their property line.
And these?
The line is, sorry.
And these people are right at the setback, right? The oceanfront setback?
Their, their house, the, the house that they're building is, is, yeah, they, it meets the, the oceanfront setback.
Right at the setback. It's a forty seven hundred square foot house, am I right?
Yes, I think that's right.
So under the conditional use criteria, the need is established by the fact that they're building a forty seven hundred square foot house right at the oceanfront setback. That's establishing the need, right? Because if they built it a few feet farther back and took some of the square footage away, would they eliminate the need to have this burrito?
Well, it depends on how fast the, the, the bank is going to erode. I mean, I think, I think it could be, you know, it could be significantly greater in the future. But, but that's irrelevant because the houses, the foundation of the house is already, the, the structure is being built as we, as we speak. So.
Yeah, last three weeks, they, they basically built it, or last three or four weeks. So, but I'm just saying that, um, that need that you're talking about, or the need that has to be shown for conditional use permit is established by the fact that this house is, you know, I mean, I understand the need, but I'm saying there are other solutions. Would have been not to build such a gigantic house and just set it back a little farther.
Well, sure, and that's, you know, that's hypothetical. It's not, it's not possible now. But, you know, I mean, they're not going for a riprap permit. I think that's the important thing to focus on here. You know, riprap is, 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 I think, is ugly and, you know, if you can avoid riprap, all they want to do is put essentially some soil wrapped in fabric and cover it with sand and beach grass. I mean, that's, that, that seems to be, you know, a very reasonable request.
Mr. Morgan? Mr. Morgan, I have a question. This is Clay Newton. I'm concerned a little bit about the timing. It seems like those king tides have been coming in January. You mentioned November for planting. Jeff, you've mentioned October, November. I'm a little bit concerned that, you know, this, this new system would be put in place, these king tides would come along and really decimate it. Can you speak to timing in a little more detail than we have relative to weather trends in the last few years?
Well, I think the, the real problem with the king, if the king tide comes in and takes away the, all the sand and the beach grass that's been planted on top of it, you still have the clay structure in place. That, that's not going to go anywhere. It's, it's, you know, it's tons and tons of, of clay soil, you know, wrapped in fabric. So in that eventuality, they would go back and cover it again with, you know, in the spring or whenever. They would, they would replant because they, you know, they wanted to look like a natural, you know, a, a natural dune, not, not a, you know, not a, you know, a fabric filled with clay.
You mentioned, you mentioned the, the, I think it's called the hooker willow is a better source for securing these banks than, than the beach grass. is a better source for securing these banks than the beach grass. How would that do? I guess what I'm getting at is would it maybe make more sense to plant in February, March, when we pass this potential for king tides versus October, November? Whether it was European beach grass, which would be a little easier to replant because you could just put the soil down, versus the hooker willow, which I think I would lean toward of the two, because you've said it's more stable. I'm just trying to make sure we don't... The timing isn't such that you put something in and then it gets wiped out with the first king tide.
Right. Well, I think they would like to have the option of doing either if there was some assurance through a condition that they could trim the willows down to maintain their view.
Right, I understand that.
But I think they're, you know, they're capable of replanting after a king tide. I'm not sure that the king tide would affect the beach grass. I mean, it could come up and slosh over it, but beach grass is pretty much immune to saltwater, so I don't think it would be damaged.
So on page 10, under 174240, "Means inactivity prohibited." It talks about "Aiding in key residential development, commercial industrial zones shall be prohibited on beaches, when there is sand and beach. This subject wave over talking and speed, the willow stabilization vegetation, except as part of a four dune grading plan provided for by Section 60A3 or a non-structural shoreline stabilization program 174060A5 or as provided by 175230." So that's my understanding, Bill. That's what I was saying. I think that under this, we can, because it's coming through a conditional use permit, we can condition that they can trim these willows, because it's part of that stabilization.
Absent some other code provision, that seems, you know, like the right reading.
So is it willows or is it beach grass?
I would request that we have the option of doing either, with the understanding that it could be managed.
Okay. Any other questions for Mike?
I will add that the way the burrito is designed is to... It will wrap around the corner or the south property line so that waves that are coming in, and armored with logs or whatever natural material, so that it won't unravel. And hopefully, the property owners to the south will decide to cooperate with this. But on page 15 of Tom's report, figure 12, you can see the willows that are down the beach, about two or three lots. And those were... That was the burrito project I mentioned that was done in 1995. And I would challenge anybody to, without going into the, digging into the vegetation, see that it's a burrito that's just been completely covered with vegetation. Okay, thank you.
Actually, Mr. Morgan, I did have one more question for you, Mr. Morgan.
Yes.
Can you speak to the construction around the stairway? What's the extent of what that reconstruction is going to involve?
I think that... I'm not entirely clear, but I think that they're just going to prop it up and repair it. It was, you know, it's collapsing, but it's solid. So I think they, you know, they will just prop it up and utilize it again.
Because the way I look at this, if you put that burrito there and it were consistently to 15 feet across the front of the lot, it would cover those stairs. So then...
I... I just spoke. I said on the plan on page seven of Tom's report, it says it shows the existing stairs being there, and they will stay there. And then there's new boulder steps per microquinn from existing landing to beach. So they'll put some, just some stair step stepping paths down to the beach from the concrete landing.
So new steps, but not a new... I hate to be dicing too here, too much here, but new steps, but not a new stairway or entirely new stairway?
No, it says existing stairs and then these new boulder steps per microquinn. So that is just enough stones to put your foot on as you're going down the burritos, so you don't trample vegetation.
So new steps.
Well, they're boulders, yeah.
Yeah, stepping boulders. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Presentations by participants. Presentation by the committee. Staff response?
No further, other than the monitoring for time, season for establishment and placement. And then the conditions, you guys, if there's anything on stairs or willows.
Okay. Close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Is there a motion to be made?
I move to approve the proposed conditional use permit with monitoring for yearly inspections for five years and construction to be timed for off-season with a provision for the applicant to decide if they wanted to use willows, which could be maintained for views.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and it's been seconded. Any further discussion?
Can we get a better definition of off-season? Because there was some discussion as to... There's some differences in opinion to what off-season?
You could set the limit just on the season and say any time post, you know, Memorial Day to Labor Day or whatever, you know, after that.
You mean Labor Day to Thanksgiving or...
Or Labor Day to March? Is that what you're thinking, giving them the whole?
That's what I was saying, that, you know, time around.
I mean, if you're going to be planning, I'm thinking that September, October would be a good time if you can get in there and do that. Otherwise, it'd be delayed until the spring.
And yet, like Clay brought up, they may want, if they have the opportunity, they may want to do it in early spring and then give it the time to grow, so...
I just want to say that this happened so fast that these foundations were poured and the houses, the lot was cleared and the foundations were poured so quickly. I can't personally justify denying this permit, but I just want to put on the record that I find it obscene that there is a 4,700-square-foot home going in on this lot in this residential neighborhood. And, you know, they didn't have to make it all the way up to the line. They could have put it a little bit farther back and shaved off 1,000 square feet and solved the problem. But that's neither here nor there, I guess. It bothers me.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Did you determine the time? Is it November to March or...
Well, I'm saying that they should have the option of, if they can get in there in the fall, September, October would be a window. But if they can't get in there in that time, then it should happen in the spring.
So two March, so September to March is the window. Is that okay?
Yeah, yes. So is the motion amended to reflect that? Does it need to be?
Make the motion. I made the motion. I'm good with that amendment. We can do September to March. The construction should be sometime between September and March.
Okay. All right. Bill call?
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Burns?
Joe?
Bennett?
Joe?
Joe?
Somebody call him.
He's in bed.
He's there.
Yeah, I think he's drifting asleep.
I see him on the screen.
He's snoring.
He's really thinking about it.
Derek, you want to ask him about the motion?
Yeah. So are you for the motion or not?
I can't hear it.
Joe, I'll repeat the motion. Let me go back to the way I worded it. Unless somebody wrote it down.
I can read it. Hey, Joe, can you hear me? You got it? Yes, yep. Okay, Joe, the motion is for approval of the conditional use permit conditioned upon monitoring report with yearly inspections for a period of five years. The construction timing amended to state any time between September, preferably in September to November, but allow through March. Then the condition to allow for trimming of the willows or the sea grasses that are planted on the berms.
Well, I guess the only thing I'm thinking of is the trimming of the willows, but I'm not sure that we should allow for trimming of the beach grass.
Okay.
Great, tell I'm in.
Joe, the thought behind that was that the willows are a better...
I understand that.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that was you talking. I didn't hear right, sorry.
Okay, do you have it? Are you ready to vote, Joe? Joe, can you hear me?
Yes.
You're... Okay, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Reluctantly, yes.
I'm sorry, what did she say? Commissioner Hough?
Yes.
Chair Johnson?
Do I have a motion for the chair to sign the appropriate orders?
So moved.
Okay, and there was... You seconded that?
I did.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett?
No, we didn't get to.
Commissioner Burns?
Joe? We're asking for the chair to sign the appropriate orders.
Right.
Okay, yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Hough?
Yes.
Commissioner Newton?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Chair Johnson?
Yes. Okay. The ongoing item is off for tonight, so is there any good of the order?
Yes, I was wondering if somebody can explain how it is that down by the Wayfair, they've been able to take out all the sand? I thought we had a no-grading policy.
They can do remedial grading.
And they clean out in front of...
Yes, 12 feet. They have a 12-foot area that they can remove sand and then remove it down to...
But they've removed the whole berth, or a good portion of it, from what it was?
For, you know, I... Oh, I have, you know, notice of whatever it is. I don't know, and I can move into that.
I would do it.
And I have... Well, speculate that I have... You're not the only person to do that. So...
Well, I mean, it's just an observation, isn't it?
And it's well taken and we're going to have a public worksman myself on site when any of this works. So previously, we presented that and just allowed it with these conditions. But from now on, part of that condition will be someone on site.
And is the city paying to do this?
For my process, yes. No, the city's not, the applicant will be paying.
Pardon me?
The applicant is paying for all of the process. We don't pay for that.
I have something for the good of the order. So what's going on with the living wall on the Nicholson property?
Have no idea, Lisa. Have not been over there lately and have not had any complaint or any concerns about it.
There is a contract... There's a contract that was signed with a legal binding contract that said that we're going to maintain a living wall on the property. They're not doing it. So I drive by there at least once a week. It hasn't happened. So how many years is this going to go on before we enforce the contract?
You know, that is up to you to bring that forward, City Council or whoever. We are... It's living wall. What standard that needs to be maintained? I've brought this up before. That standard just says that it's maintained, a living wall is maintained. What standard does that do? I don't know.
It's not maintained.
We have standards for pruning. We have standards for many things, but they are fairly specific. But I don't know what, you know, is it a 75% success rate as a lot of land states? Or why? We don't know.
Well, I would say this is more like a 2% success rate. I mean, it's an eyesore. And I guess I just... I know I keep bringing this up every single meeting and I'm getting tired of hearing myself, but I want to know, since there's a contract drawn up with the city, isn't it the city's responsibility to make sure they live up to their end of the contract?
It is, but that's what I'm trying to say is as far as I believe the city's concerned right now, they are meeting that contract.
So that living wall is... You say that what's there now is a living wall?
Yes, I mean, I've been by it and I can say that there's a living plant on that wall. I don't know what was envisioned. I don't know what the... Why there wasn't standard attached to it to say that it needs to have this certain success rate and be maintained to certain levels, wasn't at the time. But as far as I know, every time I drive by, there's plenty living there on that wall. I just don't know what standard the city was expecting. It's what?
Weeds? Is that what's considered a living wall? If there's a bunch of weeds with a couple tired ferns?
I think it could be, again, without a definition. The thing to probably get some action on that, Lisa, is to have some sort of record, request some sort of record from Nicholson on maintenance. You have to maintain weeds too, right? So if he's not maintaining anything, that's where you have a proof that the action that was promised is not the action that's being taken. But without a definition of what living is, we have nothing. Which is another reason that... of what living is, we have nothing, which is another reason that, as, as Joe mentioned earlier, that, that the idea behind a cluster development is just, has a, has a, it could be a cluster in a lot of other ways, which we just keep being reminded of on Nicholson.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I guess, I think that, I, I don't remember, actually, I can't remember right now exactly how a living wall was defined. I know that, uh, they hired Beth Holland, supposedly, to, um, to, uh, oversee the plantings, et cetera. And I, from what I know of Beth Holland, I don't think that that was what she envisioned. So, I, I don't know. I mean, what is the next step?
I, I think some sort of step to request maintenance, maintenance, uh, proof of maintenance of the wall.
What, what, who does that?
Who do I request that from?
Pardon me?
Yeah, that's my turn, just like, you know, uh, Lisa, you know, I, I understand, and I'm sorry, we can't do anything, but like you said, and Barb just brought up, who, who should be maintaining that? Yes, the applicant should be maintaining.
No, no, I mean, who, which body do we bring it to? Do we bring it to Planning Commission? The City Council?
It would have to go, I understand the City Council. I don't know, this body is not going to-
Well, you know, we have records of, this is Joe, we have records of the meetings in which there is glorious praise for this quote, "living wall," and, and how natural it would be, blah, 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 because, you know, from the, from the outset, the Planning Commission was dubious about just how attractive this hunk of concrete was going to be.
They may have, they may have included some sort of schematic or drawing of what it should look like. That might be interesting.
Yeah.
Well, that's true.
That it was supposed to be all of the cement of the wall. Right. It, you shouldn't really be able to see too much of the wall. It should have just-
Exactly.
Exactly. That's true. And that's-
That's what I'm talking about. That should be in the record in the minutes of our meetings, which went on forever, for God's sake.
Right. But I, I think it's really important that we don't let this go, because what, what that sets a precedent is if you just ignore people long enough, eventually they'll get tired of pestering you to, to fulfill your obligation. I don't think that should happen.
So, do we put it on the Planning Commission agenda for next?
I would like to.
Next month?
Yeah.
On the City Council?
I'm sorry, but-
Back to the Planning Commission at the next meeting would-
I can't-
It's not the job of the Planning Commission to enforce the, enforce the rule. It's, you know, we, we were given, the city was given the, the expectation of a wall that was just going to turn up, a verdant green. And, and, and I think that, that it, that will show up in the minutes of planning meetings or the tape recordings or whatever, and, and if it's a, a chunk of concrete with not much but weed or two and a fern growing in it, that is not going to comport with what our records will show. And then, we have a position of removing the damn wall.
So, Joe, my suggestion of bringing it to the Planning Commission was for, because there's a couple of us that weren't on that commission at that time, is just kind of review what it was supposed to be, and then take it to the City Council.
Okay.
For enforcement.
Right. And then maybe get some, some input from, um, the city attorney about what actions can be taken, what are reasonable, and what, you know, because, well, Bill was in on that whole thing. He, he was part of the discussion at the time, so, um, you know, he would know, he would maybe have some recollection and some idea of what can be done to enforce that contract.
And I don't think we're going to get to an answer tonight, but let me and Jeff work on it, and we'll bring it back to you at the next Planning Commission meeting.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great idea.
Okay. Uh, anything else? Good of the order? Okay, we're adjourned.
Thank you all.
I don't, I can't stand up.
Standing down.
I, I thought about a couple times getting up, but I thought I'd just walk out.
My mask is glued to the-
Yeah.
Can I still get up this way?
Yes.
Can you just leave this on top of?
Yeah, yeah.
Or you're-
You can just leave it right there and I'll just get up.
Or she has to disinfect it, Joe.
That is true.
Yeah.
Maybe I'll just move it and let it all air out.
Last of them?
Oh, yeah, thank you. I will figure that one out.